Mayor, we like.
Great, thank you. So today is January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two, at the time of seven ten P M., and I'm calling to order the Baldwin Park City Council Virtual Regular Meeting. And then, uh, where is, let's see, Mayor Pro Tem, would you like to lead us in our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, you didn't even count me in. Call me off guard.
Sorry.
Um, and then, I don't know, is there anybody signed on that can do an invocation? Does anybody know? Okay, it appears not, so we'll skip that for today. And then, City Clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Alejandra Avila. Are you muted?
Oh, she's muted. She's here.
Okay. Councilmember Monica Garcia?
Yeah.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez?
President.
All right.
Mayor Pro Tem, Daniel Damian?
Here.
Mayor Emmanuel Estrada?
Here.
And City Treasurer, Ari Contreras. She's here.
She's here, yeah, she's muted, but yeah, she's definitely here. So, uh, Robert, is there anything to report out from closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the council did consider multiple items in closed session, and staff did receive direction. However, there was no final action taken, therefore no reportable action, and that concludes my report for the closed session that occurred.
Great, and then it is, uh, currently on recess, so we will be joining again.
Yes, that is correct, Mayor. We have not closed, closed session.
Great, thank you. And the announcements to City Council are also members of the Board of Directors of the Housing Authority and Finance Authority, which are concurrently convening with the City Council this evening, and each council member is paid an additional stipend of thirty dollars for attending the Housing Authority meeting and fifty dollars for attending the Finance Authority meeting. At this moment, I do believe we have a presentation from Jaime Espinoza regarding Hope Fest, uh, for Baldwin Park, uh, and he is part of Project Hope. Oh, you are on mute, Jaime.
Okay, there we go. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor and council members and, uh, and everyone here. Uh, so yeah, I wanted to come on and just kind of share a presentation of, uh, of, you know, we would love to do a Hope Fest, uh, community event there in the city of Baldwin Park. Uh, we did, I did talk to, to the councilman Daniel Damian, kind of just, kind of, well, the vision we have, so we, we did one in Pomona recently, and, uh, we've done, did one in Vegas last year and Selma. And so basically what we do is, is just, uh, we look for a park in the city where we can come out, and, uh, we provide free, bring a team of barbers, we provide free haircuts, free clothing, free groceries, uh, free shoes, free baby needs, essentials, diapers, wipes. And then we also do a free concert. We provide a kid zone, and then one of the big things we do is we tap into the local resources that are there in the community, in Baldwin Park, in L A County. We try to bring everybody out to the park to set up a booth, an exhibition booth, and kind of just bring greater awareness to the people in the community there at Baldwin Park of what resources are available for them. So like I said, we just did, our last one was in Pomona, we had over twenty-five, close to thirty resource booths that were out there from the District Attorney's Office to, uh, uh, local resources to N double A C P. We had a lot of resources, a lot of time, community was a great event. We had maybe five to six hundred community members that came out, and, uh, we would love, as Project Hope, we would love to do one there in the city of Baldwin Park. And so, um, you know, we're, we would love to do one there, and, uh, it takes about a good four months, uh, you know, to plan and prepare. Um, our, all our events are put on by sponsors, and so it takes us a little bit of time to get the word out, promote it, get some sponsorships, and, uh, do all that good stuff. But yeah, we, like I said, we would love to do something there in the city of Baldwin Park.
Great, I think that's a great idea. And then, um, and then you are doing a presentation, correct? So that, I'll save my comments for the end.
Well, no, I mean, just basically, so that's what we, and that's what we do is, is, is so, uh, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember, uh, Daniel, you guys went to the one we did at the Baldwin Park Church. So it's kind of the same thing, but, uh, bigger. Um, you know, bigger scope, just, uh, I, I, we, we love doing it in a park in the city, somewhere where, you know, it's out in the open. Um, and, and really just, that's, you know, that's pretty much what, what we do. So our team, you know, our, the Project Hope team will come out, we'll bring out the barbers, we'll bring out the, the groceries, the, the clothing, shoes, um, whatever we can get to bring into the community, we'll bring it. And then the resources are the big part of the event, because that's one of the things that we love to see is the community and the organizations, faith-based, non, non-faith-based, social services, whatever we can bring into that community and have them out there. We had also job placement, uh, chartwell staffing was out at the one in Pomona, and they had, uh, people applying for jobs. So, uh, we're all about empowering the community and helping people, so this is something that, uh, that we can envision being a, a, a great event that could possibly, possibly be something we can do every year in the city of Baldwin Park.
Yeah, and I, oh, yes, Mayor Pro Tem, go ahead.
And just really quick, uh, I did watch some of the videos that he sent. He does have a website, uh, for his nonprofit. Um, just picture it as a typical concert at the park, right? You have your, you know, when we have our concerts at the park, we normally have our, our stage up there where, you know, the concert is at, and then you have all of our small businesses with their vendors in the park area, but instead of these being vendors actually selling items, these will be, you know, resources and different types of vendors that are going to be giving away a lot of these items, uh, for our, our community. We can also, uh, work with, uh, Hilda Solis's office and bring in, uh, vaccination sites, um, to that event. I don't know the schedule, he would have to schedule with, uh, Manny to see what it would look like, because obviously we started concerts in the park in June. So maybe this could be something that'll kind of kick off our concerts in the park maybe a week prior, because it will be on the weekend. Um, just kind of bounce out the ideas like that, but this would be something that would bring a lot of resources and a lot of information to our residents, uh, that would be beneficial, and basically we would just co-host it, um, in the way to where we would basically provide the facility for them. And I believe Manny, you know, he has more information on this.
Yes, Mayor. Go ahead, Mr. Espinoza.
Okay, just real, I did want to mention, and I forgot to, so at, at these events that we do have the Hope Fest events, um, everything is free. Um, so we, we don't sell anything to the community, the community members don't have to pay, uh, to come in there to enjoy the concert. Everything is free, we give away the, the, the clothing, the dive, everything's free. Uh, we believe in, in giving back to the community and, and, uh, so that's another thing with our events, they're a hundred percent free to the people.
Mayor?
Uh, yes, hold on, I think Manny was gonna make a.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Carpio.
Yes, thank you. Uh, I would like to have an opportunity to be with Mr. Espinoza, and, uh, we could collaborate together and figure out a game plan, and then I could bring back a staff report, uh, for, with a, at a subsequent City Council meeting, and then the City Council will have an opportunity to formally approve the proposed project with the budget and all the particulars.
Okay. Um, and then, Councilmember Avila, did you have a comment?
Thank you, yes. Uh, thank you, Jaime, for being here. I, I did go to that fest as well as Enrique. And I was very impressed. I, I went through the booth that you offered, uh, brand-new clothes with tags still on there. You had grocery, grocery bags already packed for the families to take. You did have all that information that, um, the barber, everything that you mentioned, it was really nice, and considering that it was a small space that, that you held in at the church, you had, you provided a lot for the community, and there, everybody was very happy. You had music, like, uh, Danny said, it was like a concert. It was a concert, everybody was happy because they were enjoying, um, music, they were enjoying food, they had free clothes, free food to take home, and a lot of resources, which is what a lot of people need, resources. So thank you, Jaime. Um, it is a great event that you, that you hold. It was a smaller version of it here in Baldwin Park compared to what I saw on your postings, uh, that you did in Pomona, but I think it would be great to have it here in the city of Baldwin Park if we can collaborate it once you get together with Manny and put everything together. I think it, it would be great for us. Thank you, Jaime, for letting us know.
Thank you, thank you, and it was good to have you all at the, uh, one there at the church, but the one, the, the one that, that we envisioned there at the park in Baldwin Park is, is, uh, something a lot bigger with a lot more resources. So that's, that's big to us, my wife and I, and our team, you know, besides the giveaways that we gave away and, and everything, the, the basic needs that people need, right, is, is bringing out the resources in, in the, in the community and things that, you know, different things that can help people. So we even had in Pomona, we did have a vaccination site there. We did go through the Office of Hilda Solis, um, and, uh, and, and it was just a, an awesome, awesome.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Jaime.
And so I do wanna, um, you know, I do want to commend Jaime and his wife, and then Octavio and his wife, you know, I, um, living word, where you, where you host these events, the, the old V F W Center, and, and it's not just one or two, I mean, you know, I think we went to the first one, like, uh, in early January, I think, and I know that you've had multiple since then, and, and it's all for the community, and I think it's great, you know, and, and, you know, I wanna, you know, I want to show my appreciation, because you guys have been great neighbors to the city of Baldwin Park. Um, you know, uh, you have the, you just had them for Christmas, and I, I stopped by for the toy drive, but I wasn't able to make it for the actual giveaway, which I thought was neat, because, uh, you know, it's, it's hard times for a lot of people, and, and it's nice to see that you are all over the place. I think I saw one, um, a little further out, I think towards a desert area, I'm not sure where it was.
Yeah.
But, yeah, and, you know, and so, you know, I, I'm thankful that you are, uh, you know, that you, you're a great neighbor to the city, but also you're very, uh, involved, and you're always looking to partner with us in any way that we can. I think we mentioned to you the, the idea of, uh, I think we might have mentioned it, uh, how it came about, the idea of converting one of our rooms in the, the community center into a music room, and then you let us know that you also have, uh, mentorship programs that are, uh, musically inclined. So, you know, want everybody to know, Project Hope goes behind, uh, goes beyond just the, the festivals, right? You're also doing, uh, mentorships in schools, you're partnering, I think, the P, uh, Pomona Unified School District. So you, you yourself have a lot of, uh, uh, great, uh, programs under, under your, under your organization, which I think, uh, you know, we want to look into as well, and I'm sure, you know, Manny will, will set up time so we can learn more about those as well as we move forward.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're interested. Like you were saying, we do have a creative mentoring program at the school, at the sales school, the school of extended, uh, educational opportunities, and uh, it's a music class Mondays and Fridays from twelve to two, and we teach kids how to play, uh, instruments, any instrument really, um, that they want to play, and, and, uh, yeah, we would love to also do that in, in, in Baldwin Park, too.
Great, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you, Jaime. Uh, I'm gonna, uh, take you up on that offer, because I've always wanted to be a drummer, so, uh, that or the harp, so hook me up, and I'll be there on, uh, Mondays and Fridays, for sure.
You gotta be the first harp player, but that'll, that.
Always the first, between me and the mayor, and, you know, we can get a band here going together here in Baldwin Park on the council.
I have, I have a drum set at home, we can, we can start practicing now.
Bring it over.
And think about all the money we'll save at the street market, huh?
Um, thank you again, Jaime, for everything you guys are doing. Appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, thank you for being here, and thank you for everything that you do, because I know you do a lot.
Thank you. And they, hey, real quick, Mr. Mayor, I see the two boxes of Hot Cheetos behind you.
Yes, so, so I, I show it off to everybody in all of my Zoom meetings, so I did get a Hot Cheeto box, as we all know, there may, may or may not be a, uh, shortage of Hot Cheetos in the world. Jaime, you know, with, because he, he does so many great things, he has a lot of, uh, connections. Uh, he, he, uh, had Richard, uh, the, the creator of Hot Cheetos at, at the last event, uh, which was at the toy drive, and we were able to, I was able to get a box, and I do have the nice recognition flag he gave me right there. So, thank you, Jaime.
Thank you, thank you. Well, thank you for having me on and for letting me share, and hopefully we can partner, and, and we look forward to, to partner. We, we have a, a special, uh, love for, for the city of Baldwin Park, my wife and I. So, you know, we're available.
It is, thank you.
Thank you, Jaime, thank your wife, uh, Pastor Octavio and his wife as well.
Thank you, guys.
Great. Um, so at this moment, I will open up public communications. City Clerk, is there anybody looking to speak?
Yes. Mayor, be, before we do that, I'd like to close on behalf of some individuals.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So, um, first of all, I, I do want to close on behalf of former mayor Betty Lowe's, who passed away at the end of December at the age of eighty-nine, a longtime resident. She was the first woman to be elected to mayor in the city of Baldwin Park. And, uh, you know, like I said, a longtime resident, raised her family, I attended school with one of her sons, and, um, you know, it was, it, it, it was a loss for our community, but definitely want to extend our condolences to the Lowe's family. And I also want to, um, close on behalf of Louise Duran. Um, she is the sister of Cecilia Bernal, our commissioner. And Cecilia was, uh, I'm sorry, Louise, excuse me, uh, was a true warrior in, uh, as she battled, uh, breast cancer for many years, and she overcame, and unfortunately, um, you know, she, she did go into remission, and then unfortunately it did come back. And so she passed away January twenty-ninth of this year, and we want to give our condolences to the Duran family, and, you know, just make sure that we send our support as a city, uh, because we do have a, a family member um, in Cecilia Bernal, who has been a strong ally to our community, and we want to make sure that they feel as supported as possible. And then finally, I want to give, um, condolences and, and close on behalf of the individuals that were, that perished in a, um, house fire in January, um, on Clark Street. I believe it's the Rodriguez family, I don't have the names, but I do want to extend our condolences to the Rodriguez family and offer our support in any way possible um, as they were displaced and, you know, as they get through this very challenging time. So our condolences from, on behalf of the city of Baldwin Park, and, um, we close on their behalf. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for that, Councilmember Garcia.
And Mayor, um, if I'm, I call on, uh, Councilmember Garcia, um, I, I believe the family was Cecila Perez and Ellen, uh, the people who had, uh, passed away at the, uh, house fire on Clark Street. So my condolences to their family as well, as well as to Tim and the Lowe's family, and, uh, Cecilia Bernal and all of the, uh, Bernal family, uh, for their loss. Wanted to send the condolences to those families. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, thank you, and I, I agree. I, um, you know, we want to send our condolences. Uh, when I found out about, uh, Betty Lowe's, I, uh, I, I knew who she was, I didn't know her, but I, I did get to, uh, virtually meet, uh, some of her family members. I, I believe I also met her, uh, daughter-in-law, and, you know, they're very nice, and, and, uh, and they even shared some of the pictures of her when she was mayor, and it was very nice, very nice to see that. I did share them with Manny, I think Manny got to speak to the family, and I believe the city did send out, uh, some flowers, uh, on, on the city's behalf. So I want to thank staff for that, and of course, our condolences to the Lowe's family. She was our very first elected mayor, uh, female, uh, woman mayor, which is very big. Um, and, and speaking of that, I do want to make sure that we, uh, that the city look at how we can, um, uh, recognize Betty Lowe's. And then, yeah, so, and give me one second, okay?
Thank you, sorry.
Yeah, sorry about that. And then, of course, uh, Louise Duran, um, you know, the Duran family has been phenomenal, and they have been great neighbors, they, you know, they're always out, uh, every Thursday, and I think every, every now and then on Saturday, they're delivering meals to, to, uh, seniors, you know, they've been, they've been, they've been really great, uh, neighbors to the community as a whole. So we obviously, we, we do want to lend our support to them, uh, when they need it the most. Our condolences, and I know that Cecilia is our, uh, you know, she's one of our commissioners as well, so we, we want to, we want to support her, we want to support her as much as possible, along with, with the rest of the Duran family. So, uh, Councilmember Avila, uh, go ahead.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. I also want to send my condolences, uh, to the family that lost, uh, loved ones at the fire. So my condolences go out to the family, as well as the Lowe's family. Um, Tim is a friend of mine, and he's, we've been friends for many, friends for many years. Um, it's funny, though, at, at one point, I didn't know his mom had been mayor of Baldwin Park in two years later, but they are a beautiful family. I, I also want to send my condolences, um, to the family of Louis Duran. Louis, Louise was a former Baldwin Park employee, she was well-loved by, by students. She came across many families and touched many families, so my condolences to the whole family, her son, her sister, everybody that she was involved with. So my condolences to all, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for that. And before I forget, I do want to thank P D, because P D did go out and show their support for, for Louise, uh, when they had her, uh, celebration parade. So, you know, I want to thank P D for being, for doing that, and also, you know, being supportive of the family.
And then, just one more thing, Mayor, before we go on to the consent or public speaking. Um, Manny, I wanted to see if Manny, I know that last year, uh, we proclaimed, uh, February twenty-second as David Gaither Day, uh, to the family, and just wanted to see Manny if there was any possibility that we can add his name to the marquee on February twenty-second to honor him and his family.
Sure, with council consensus, we could go ahead and move forward with, with that.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Great. Um, Chief Deputy City Clerk, was there anybody looking to speak during public communication?
Uh, yes, Mayor, sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, we have three speakers, Catherine Lozier, the librarian, John Rios, and Javier Navarro, and I'll defer to the Deputy City Clerk.
Thank you, let me try, uh, Catherine for just one moment.
And, Mr. Mayor, really quickly, um, as we bring on our librarian, can we just kind of hold her, uh, hold, onto her for a few minutes? Uh, for a minute, excuse errors, or a few seconds, I just want to, uh, just, uh, mention some little items for her, if that's.
Yeah, that, that's fine, just don't, just don't let her hang up.
If you can just, uh, give the preamble to her, I appreciate it.
Oh, okay, sure, I, I, yeah, I was gonna double-check with, with the Lulu. Am I doing the speaking, or is a city clerk? Because I know you normally do it when we're in person.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm sorry, I was trying to link her, and I don't think it worked. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Okay. I think I can link you now, go ahead, you have three minutes, go ahead.
Perfect, thank you so much. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, community partners and fellow community members. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. The Baldwin Park Library is still open and providing select in-person service to our community on Tuesdays, noon to eight, Wednesdays through Saturdays, ten to six. And the following services are available for customers. You can browse and check out items, use the public computer for up to one hour per day. Uh, you can print and make photocopies, and up to ten pages are free per day. You can pick up your holds, and we, uh, staff are available for brief interactions, helping to find materials and information. And we have Wi-Fi both in the library and spread throughout our parking lot. To help, uh, slow the spread of COVID nineteen, the L A County libraries are operating at just fifty percent capacity, uh, our headcount in the building for the month of January, and in-person events are, are canceled until further notice. And sidewalk service is still available on request for holds or printing pickup during the library's operational hours, and our digital library is always open and available. The most up-to-date information on available library services and hours is on the L A County website at LACountyLibrary.org. And then I also wanted to take a moment to talk about two special programs we have for January. Now, every Friday, we have Smartie Pants Storytime for preschoolers and their, and their caregivers. On Friday, January twenty-eighth, we have a special one for Lunar New Year. Uh, families can celebrate Lunar New Year with books and songs, rhymes, movements, while learning about school readiness skills and having fun. And then, uh, part of our special Trailblazers and Conversation Series, on Thursday, January twenty-seventh, from seven to eight, Patrice Colors and Angela Davis will be having, uh, a discussion. Uh, Patrice Colors has her latest book. It's an abolitionist handbook, which charts the framework for how everyday activists can effe- and effectively fight for an abolitionist presence and future with relatable information on the history of abolition, a reimagining of re- what reparations would look like for Black life, and real-life anecdotes. And this program is in partnership with the California African-American Museum, and will be moderated by, uh, our own L A County Library Director, Sky Patrick. For more information on this program, you could visit caamuseum.org forward slash programs, or you can also find it on the library's website at LACountyLibrary.org. Thank you all so much, and have a great evening.
Great, so don't hang up, Catherine. Can you hear me? Great, so, uh, Councilmember Hernandez did have, uh, some questions and comments for you, so I want to hold you for a little bit.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Catherine. Um, you know, you know, the library is such a huge resource in our, in our city, in our community. Uh, I wanted to see if perhaps, you know, if we can work with Manny and the rest of the council, uh, to perhaps, you know, create, uh, some sort of reading challenge, uh, for our young adults, uh, primarily perhaps, you know, our elementary students. Uh, you know, as, you know, as we move towards spring breaks and the summer months, uh, you know, I want to see if there's a way in which we can challenge our young, our young little leaders, uh, in our city, uh, to be able to, you know, it, it's either, you know, a reading challenge or word count challenge, or whatever the case may be, but perhaps we could, uh, do something in and around that where we can provide, uh, you know, prizes, uh, as needed, and I'd be happy to, you know, and I'm sure my colleagues would be happy to donate, uh, you know, whatever, uh, prizes, you know, uh, wish lists that you believe, uh, might entice these young individuals, uh, to read, but if that's something that, you know, if you'd be open to, um, you know, at least on my side, I'd be certainly willing to, uh, help support in any which way I can, um, because again, I understand the value that our library, uh, provides, and, uh, you, you know, you're obviously well, uh, attuned with our community, uh, and always, you know, great, uh, paying, uh, you know, uh, your respects to, to the council and the rest of the community when you come out here. Um, is that something that, that sounds of, of interest to you, Catherine?
Well, uh, for, for things like that, I would have to work with, with my administration, but we do have a spring and summer reading program every year. So it, I don't have a launch date yet, but we are on the same page with, uh, challenge for, for families, and this would be not only for, for children, but also for, for children, teens and adults, our spring and summer reading program. But what I can do is, um, talk to my administration and reach out to Manny.
Perfect, I'll let it, I'll let, uh, I'll let you, I'll let the giant brains, uh, you know, uh, figure that out, and then, uh, however that works, uh, you know, please come back to us so we could certainly, uh, promote that on all of our socials, uh, platforms, our marquee and so forth, uh, to really, you know, uh, galvanize these young individuals, uh, to utilize and leverage, uh, your facilities as much as possible.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, appreciate it.
Great, thank you, and thank you, Catherine. Thank you, Ms. Lowe.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
So the next caller is, uh, John Rios, one moment. So the next caller is, uh, John Rios, one moment. Okay, whenever you're ready, you can go ahead and start, you have three minutes. Oh, okay, one moment, um, Mark. Can we bring the translator into this channel? I don't know how soon that can happen.
Reese, you ready?
Okay, we're gonna give you six minutes, Luis, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay, um.
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you, Luis, um, Mr. Rios, Luis is here to translate for you, we're gonna give you six minutes. And we're gonna do it at the pace of, of Luis, um, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, I just wanna bring up a couple of things from that's been happening in the city. Uh, I, I usually go around the city and, you know, take a drive and see how everything's going. And for the past, I would say, month, month and a half. I've been seeing a lot of trash all over the place, you know. That's one of the biggest thing that's been happening. Even in my area, against the freeway. On Petroni and stuff, I get all that area is very bad next to the.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Rios, but, but, um, because you're speaking in English, we have the translator in a, in a Spanish channel, did you wanna speak in Spanish so you can translate into English?
I really talk in English.
Okay, then let me have the translator go back to the Spanish channel, because we don't have anybody there to translate to Spanish. This is, I'm sorry, Mr. Rios, but when you ask to be tr- to, to have a translator. It's if you're speaking in another language to be translated into English. We have somebody, because we're working remotely from home, we have somebody in the Spanish channel who is already translating simultaneously what you're saying into Spanish.
Okay.
Okay, so give me one minute, let me go ahead and have them go back in. Us, okay, go ahead. You can, you can continue, Mr. Rios.
Okay, so that's one of the biggest problems that I've been seeing in the city. Uh, Ramo- Ramona Parkway, uh, she furniture all over Virginia, uh, street. Next to in and out, uh, warehouses. It, it's all, I've never seen it this bad, I've been here in, uh, in Bonfire for forty-five years. And I never have seen it this bad. And another thing is that, uh. Talking to my neighbors, uh, the ex-mayor has been coming around. Walnut Creek and talking to them and saying, uh, bringing issues to them. And so they come to me and they tell me about it. And I had placed a call and I talked to Danny for the mayor to give me a call, he never gave me a call. I called, uh, the CEO and he never gave me a call either. You know, uh. The reason I'm really upset is another thing that happened during the, this testing at Kaiser. Uh, the police department was blocked off our whole street, there's only one way in and one way out. From right here, and the people needed to go to work. So they took. In other words, they took their law into their hands and they went on the opposite side. And one other thing that I, uh, they noticed, they, the police department told them, uh, hold on. What the hell you guys are doing. So they kept them in there for around fifteen minutes. They should have notified the community that there were gonna be that much traffic and to take. You know, the, the opposite side of the street to, to get out of here, because they need to go to work. Some of the people that I talked to, they were an hour late, hour and a half late. But those are the little things that, you know, the police department should have let us know. It should have put signs, you know, we're gonna have traffic control. They did that for two days and then they turned around and they. Put the traffic on Neymar, which it was fine and dandy, then the people from. The area could get out and go to, go to work. But those are the little things that the police department should notify the community. Not act, just because you have a badge, you have to understand that they have to report to the community. They work for the community. You're not hold the traffic, you hold them for fifteen, twenty minutes. You know, that's what, what is this problem, it was right there.
Thank you, Mr. Rios, your time's up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next caller, um, is Javier Navarro, let me try him now. Okay, your time begins, uh, when you start speaking, go ahead.
Oh, okay, uh, okay, uh, good evening, uh, Mayor and, uh, council members. Uh, what I wanna talk about, uh, tonight is, uh, it's the new lights down on Ramona. If I'm not mistaken, it's been around six months since they were put in. I don't know if any of you council members are aware, or if, or if you even been out, uh, looking at those lights. About over twenty-five percent of those lights are not working correctly. Some are lit, some are not, but it's been over six months. I don't know how much the city paid for those, but you're talking about six months, something that's not working. I talked to Sam about this. I put it on the, uh, on the Baldwin Park Connect, nothing's been done about it. And then, uh, you're talking about the, the conscience coming up. Are you still gonna have lights out? Uh, Sam, I don't know who's responsible for this, but at the end, uh, a- a- after the public comments. Can you, uh, please, uh, let the public know who's responsible for this? How much those trees, uh, lights cost, how much labor for something that's not working? Uh, close to six months, twenty-five percent. And again, I don't know if any of you council, uh, members know about this, who's responsible for this? Sam, you got my phone number, I'll be glad to go out with somebody at night. Not during the daytime, cause, cause you won't notice these, uh, these things during the daylight. I'll, I'll be glad to, uh, go out with somebody and point out all these things out. I mean, I, I mean, I can see maybe a month, uh, uh, you know, but you're talking about six months now. You've got lights on top of tree branches, even if they're lit, no light reaches the, uh, the, uh, the ground. I mean, it's just ridiculous, you know, that nobody does, nobody does any check after something gets installed. There's no follow-up on this. I don't, you know, who's responsible for this? Uh, that's what I have to say, uh, I'll hear your comments afterwards, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, that concludes our public comment.
Great, thank you, so at this moment, I will close public communication. And we have two callers, um, so Sam, we just look into the light issue, I know, uh. Still going through some, I don't think it's, I don't think that project is complete yet, but, um, you know, you can double check into that, make sure, uh, our residents are okay with that, uh, Mr. Rios. You know, Mr. Rios is always, uh, involved and I always try to listen to him, I, I wasn't aware that you, uh, told me April ten to call me, but. Uh, if you send me an email or you reach out to our office, I am pretty, uh, I am pretty easy to get ahold of, I do return calls and I respond to emails. Um, and I also meet with the residents in a safe manner whenever they, they'd like me to. Um, I think I've been very open and transparent about everything I do, uh, you know, people out there. Uh, throwing up issues, I mean, it's election year, right, and certain individuals didn't leave too happy, uh, so that's expected. Uh, but if anybody has any questions or concerns regarding what the, what the city has done or what I myself have done. Uh, you know, I'm more than glad to answer that and I, I believe staff will be as well, uh, you know, twenty twenty-one. Uh, was a big year for the city, we've done a lot of changes, uh, some things are out of, out of our control, but we've done our best to mitigate it. Um, you know, I, I pass by Petri D, so I know, when you talk about, uh, I see the trash and I see it off the off-brand, however, I think. City staff isn't allowed to go there, because it's, uh, Caltrans and then we're dealing with multi-jurisdictional issues. But our city is doing everything it can to, uh, keep it clean and keep up to date, um, you know, when it comes to the Kaiser thing, uh, you know, I do want to. Uh, let you know that, uh, the city was unaware of it, uh, and PD did respond. As, as soon as they could, and they did set up a plan and they, they met with Kaiser and there was a whole, uh, uh, team effort there to mitigate that. Uh, you know, so I don't want, uh, you know, so I, I, I think PD did, uh, really well, you know, and, you know, uh, we, we are. You know, we are on a, on a, on a crunch, so with our limited capacity and our limited officers, uh, they, they have responded to, uh. A multitude of issues, uh, fairly well, so we, but there's always room for improvement, so we'll check with chief, uh, and find out. What we're working on, but I'm, I'm confident that all of those, uh, issues have a, a very reasonable response to them. And I think that was all of our, all of our callers, uh, so at this moment, I believe by, by public communication.
Just, if I may just address the, uh, comment made by Mr. Rios, uh, without due respect to Mr. Rios, um. You know, I do take many calls from residents, concerned residents regarding different, different situations around the city. Um, one of his concerns, I, you know, I took into consideration, however, um, you know, the, the comment that he mentioned about former Mayor Lozano being at Walnut Creek. Um, you know, those are things that I'm not gonna get involved with, you know, that's more of a political issue, uh, versus a real residential issue within our community. Um, so that's the reason why I did not take deliberately to address that specific, um. Uh, issue, uh, with the call that I received, which is why there was no call to you, Mayor, thank you.
Great, thank you, yeah, of course, you know, uh, city councils to run official city business, you know, as you're elected. Uh, so that's why I did a comment on that, so as your elected official, I am here to represent you, meet with you, I've met with a multitude of, uh. Residents, phone call, email in our office, um, and anyway, they feel safe and, and getting their answers questioned, and then getting their questions answered, said that backwards. And then, of course, um, sometimes we might get a little bit busy and you might not get a response, uh, right away, but you will get a response from us or our staff. Uh, always make sure that staff is aware of the issues of our, uh, residents and, and I, and I have seen staff, uh, be very responsive to them as well. So I do wanna thank staff for being diligent on that, because I know it is a little bit difficult with everything going on and, of course, for keeping the wheels turning here at City Hall. Uh, so thank you and thank you for clarifying, uh, Mayor Paul Ten, so at this moment, uh.
Mayor?
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, um, I, I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank our police department actually for. Providing a little bit more order than there would have been at Kaiser Permanente during a week or two. That was very, um, chaotic for a lot of families, not just in Balden Park, but you know, with the surge of Omicron. Families were scurrying to get tests and I was hearing stories about waiting in line for six hours and. Wait, waiting for days to get test results, so this was, um, you know, kind of. It just kind of grew organically, but I, I do wanna thank our city leadership and our, our police department chief, uh, Lopez. For helping to keep order, because I did hear about people that were in line and it could have gotten really chaotic, um, very quickly. But, you know, I do appreciate that our police stepped in to partner with Kaiser. And really respond to, uh, a public health crisis. And, um, they did it, you know, in partnership with Kaiser and I think that it, it did offer order. I, I do understand that the neighborhood was impacted and, uh, unfortunately, there are some things that we just can't control. Um, you know, uh, in a situation like that, except to try and keep things orderly, so hopefully, we will learn. Um, you know, how to deploy resources in a way, like in the future, if that happens, that the neighborhood would be more informed. Um, so that, yeah, I understand there are alternative routes that can be identified and used. Um, I know I went to Walnut Creek Nature Park around that time and I used the Francis Kito or the Fraser Bridge. And, um, so, you know, I just happen to know that path, but, but if I didn't, I would have been in the throes of all that, that, um, traffic, so. I can appreciate the concern that Mr. Rios brought to the council this evening. And, you know, perhaps in the future, we've learned some lessons from what we just experienced this past month and we can. Uh, inform the neighborhood a little bit more, but overall, I, I am very proud that our PD stepped in and partnered with Kaiser in the way that they did. But I also have some concerns, um, with regard to some incidents that have taken place in January. And there have been at least a couple of shootings that I have been aware of. Um, and it is a concern of mine, I wanna make sure that we as a council are doing everything that we can. To address what feels like an increase in this type of gang activity. And it's, I believe, it feels, because I haven't received any data on it. It feels like we have experienced an increase beginning last January. Um, so it's now been a year and I wanna make sure that this council is looking at. You know, the, we're requesting the briefings, um, we're providing the chief with what he needs, we're understanding clearly what is needed. To, you know, staff our, our units so that we can respond to this gang activity. And I'll tell you that the reason why I feel so impassioned about this item is because I grew up in this community. At a time when the North Side, East Side gang rivalry was alive and well, I saw young men killed. And tortured, you know, behind my mom's home, um, I had friends who were shot and killed. Um, I don't wanna see any of that happening in our community and I think that we, we saw improvement in the late nineties. Um, I do remember that in the late nineties, another young man was shot and killed behind my mom's home. Um, fifteen years old and gang-related, and so, you know, again. That was curtailed for the most part in the nineties, we've experienced a nice lull in this type of activity. And for, you know, I guess up until about a year ago, and, um. I wanna make sure that what we're doing, you know, here in this council is that we are being proactive and that we're, we're asking. What is it that is happening, what are we doing, how are we bolstering the force, um, where are we allocating resources? I, I really need us to start prioritizing this conversation. Um, because I don't wanna see what happened, you know, when I was growing up, I don't want kids to be experiencing that either. And not only, you know, is it traumatic for a community, but. And it puts the community at risk, but it also impacts economic development, which we have experienced, you know, a boom of economic development in the last twenty years. For that reason, because it correlates with our public safety and, um, you know, just the public health in general, so. I wanna really stress and, and I, I have, you know, nudged here and there. Um, and over the last year, I've asked for, um, briefings, I've, I've mentioned it here on the council. And I, I'm really asking this council to really prioritize this at this point, because. You know, I have felt like it's about a year that we've seen an increase. And it seems like it might be, you know, getting worse and, um. Let's just nip it in the bud right now while we can. So, you know, it's unfortunate that I have to bring this up in the, in the regular session. But because we didn't make the time and close session again, because it wasn't prioritized. So, I wanna be really clear, that is, it is a top concern of mine that we get on this. And that we don't point fingers to the past, because this has been happening in the last year, we went through a budget cycle and what did we do to, to. Prioritize, you know, budgets in a way that addresses this gang activity. So, you know, let's really, you know, let's step up here and let's start tackling this, um, as a council. This is where the leadership, you know, this is, these are the pivotal moments that are important for our community, that impact, that have ripple effects across the community. Including economic development, um, but most importantly, the safety of our residents.
Great.
Mayor, if I may?
Um, real quick, if I can before you, Mayor Paul Ten.
Sure, go ahead.
Is, is, uh, chief, chief, is chief on the call right now? Or is, uh, cause I know Commander Captain Hoffer is here, right?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
So can you answer a couple of questions for me? That's okay with you?
I'll do my best.
Okay, uh, and then, you know, we'll hear from chief later. So first off, uh, you know, this has been a, a real issue for all of us. Uh, reorganizing the police department, we're all aware of the accusations that have been going on, the loss of money, the constant turnover of police chiefs. And you know, I personally uh don't like the implications that are being made. Uh, Chief Lopez has uh worked diligently and unfortunately because of uh the past and the past does affect the now. And that's something that we have to understand. Uh, chief, uh, doesn't just focus on the public safety piece. We reorganize our department. We're going through a lot of things. Uh, a lot of our money goes to lawsuits. Each lawsuit costs uh the city seven hundred thousand dollars to defend. So, you know, if we're going to talk about this in open session, I don't mind it, but we need to be really transparent about it. Uh, the chief, uh, so how, matter how, Hoffer, can you tell me about uh some of the task forces? Is that something you can tell me about uh in open session?
Uh, yes, we uh, one thing that we're lacking and we've lacked for the last uh about two years is membership on different task forces. Many of them are narcotics related task forces. However, membership in those task forces brings uh manpower to Ballin Park when we have a particular need for it. And oftentimes these types of teams can be um assigned to, to focus on various um, you know, problems in the, in the city. So uh not having any personnel on these task forces um hurts us because we're not able to get um resources from other agencies that we're able to get in the past.
Great. So and, and I think one of those was the, the narcotics task force, right? And so can you tell me a little bit about the task force? Do we have one now?
The task forces still exist. Uh, we do not have any personnel on them and we have not, um, as I said, for about two years now. Um, they are uh county level and federal level task forces um and actually state level as well.
Great. And so from my understanding narcotics, they were able to seize uh they were able to seize items and then uh they were able to keep a lot of the cash, right, which funded a lot of the improvements and, and, and uh police infrastructure.
Yes, sir. Uh, so forfeiture um has been a big benefit to all of law enforcement. And um, it's correct that we are no longer um benefiting from that.
Great. And then, so can you tell me when uh that task force got depleted?
This is approximately two years ago.
Okay, so two thousand nineteen?
Uh, yeah, mid, mid two thousand nineteen.
Great. And then can you tell me about the gang uh task force? How many detectives we have on there? How many we had in two thousand nineteen and what happened?
Um, we had two gang detectives. Uh, we have two gang detectives now. We had two gang detectives back in two thousand nineteen. However, we also had our own in-house um narcotic surveillance team um called the Special Investigations Unit. And they often work hand in hand. Um, um, gang members are oftentimes involved in narcotics. And so the, the, the case though kind of bleeds over from one assignment and detectives to the other. And um, because we no longer have that in-house task force, our two gang detectives um, um, work on their own and um, they do a fantastic job um with the case that they have. Uh, but again, they're dealing with um having reduced resources to call up one.
Great, thank you. So uh, so we don't, so our, our gang, our gang task force has been depleted to detectives to take care of everything else, correct? So they're taking care of uh gambling situations, gangs, graffiti.
Yes, sir, because we don't have the Special Investigations Unit anymore in-house. Our gang detectives are also being tasked with narcotics cases and like you say, other vice cases such as gambling.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so and then just for the record, com- uh Captain Hoffer, you see me in PD all the time, right? So you know, I am talking to chief on the daily. And I don't know about the other council members. Everybody has access to that department. So just not telling you, saying, but you've seen me down there.
Yes, sir, I have.
Great, thank you. So um, you know, and that's just some of it. Um, you know, I will be asking our chief of uh our chief of police for a full report so that we understand how this works. Public safety doesn't change from day, from one day to the next. Uh, there was, there seems to have been a multitude of uh defunding in two thousand nineteen that froze a, a multitude of positions. I think eight fifteen, uh, the council actually unfroze seven in the past budget and we were all there, so we know that. Uh, over the past year, we've invested over one point two million dollars in increasing our count. And we've, we've, we've upgraded our police vehicles. We've upgraded equipment and we uh, and we're now working with Flock to install Alpers uh to be able to give the ser- the resources our officers need to them so that they can keep our city safe. Um, so you know, uh, it's been an issue for me. Public safety is important, you know, and we can't sit here and politicize it. And if we have something, then by all means, if you have a solution, I want to hear it and we can work towards it. Uh, you know, I believe uh we will be hearing from from our chief later on in close session, what we come back to. Uh, we didn't talk about it earlier, not because we didn't care about it, but because we had fifteen minutes before we started this meeting. And this isn't an issue that's going to be taken care of in fifteen minutes. Uh, as council members, every single one of us gets three thousand dollars a month. And the least we can do is spend a couple of hours in city council meetings a little bit more than we used to, and that's part of the job. We're on a stipend. We're not on an hourly. So, you know, I, I, I don't like the idea of misinformation, especially when it comes to PD. Uh, public safety and ballpark has been scrutinized for far too long. And we are making strides and we're making great changes, you know, and our chief of police has been diligent and committed to the department. And I would never want to see our chief uh take on blame that he doesn't deserve or either, or any of our PD officers. I've spent some time with them. I've asked them what they need. I go on ride alongs with them and I think that, that they do a great job with the little resources and the little uh team that they have and they get things done. So public safety is important and we will keep talking about it. Uh, but I just want to make sure that uh people are understanding of what the task at hand actually is. Um, so with that being said, uh, let's go to consent calendar.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. Um, so what I've heard um, uh Captain Hoffer uh say is that we have had two gang detectives. That has not changed, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so that has always been. What has, what changed in what, what you're saying is mid two thousand nineteen? Um, was the uh Special Investigations Unit. So my question is, uh, you know, with the task force approach with parole sweeps and all of that. Is that something that our gang detectives can engage in, like you said, at the local, multi department level with the county perhaps, sheriff's department? Like you said, with the state or federal um task force is, can our gang detectives still engage with those task force uh activities?
Um, they can interact with them, but we're not going to receive the benefit of the manpower being loaned to us. Um, that only happens when we have a full-time detective assigned to the task force full-time. Um, we have had our gang detectives actually um reach out to other local agencies and try to partner on some cases um to increase uh the, the manpower that we can muster ourselves without having people on a task force. And that's something that we think we've seen some results with. It's not nearly as effective as, you know, having people on task forces. But you know, we're making do with what we have and, and we're, we're trying to partner with other local agencies.
Okay, because I know that we have loaned our personnel to other agencies. And you know, I know that other agencies have joined in regional task force operations that we've been part of. Even more recently, I think last year with parole sweeps. Um, so I think, I think what, you know, what is important is for us to understand what do we have? What are the resources that are available to us currently? Where can those be bolstered, like I said previously? And you know, what is, what, what is happening? And how are we addressing what is happening? You know, the, even just asking those questions will help us get a little bit further, I think, than where, where we have been. Um, at least in the last year that I've been asking for this information. So, um, and I'm not saying that it's on our chief, it's on our police department. Um, I'm not saying, I'm not pointing any fingers. What I'm saying is this is an issue that has feels like it has increased in our community. And so now at this point in time, what are we doing to address it, given the resources that we have? Um, whether it's personnel or, you know, other funding sources so that we can bolster what we have and address and nip it in the bud. So, um, but thank you for that, Captain Huffered. And I think that, you know, it does provide some history. History is important. Um, but it also, you know, it, it doesn't address that my questions of where are we now? What do we need? What are we doing to fill those gaps and to understand what is happening and, and address that? And that's what we need to start focusing on if we can as a council. So, thank you.
Mayor, if I may ask that any further discussion on this that may very well lead to personnel-related matters of recruitment and other things that, that we take it up in close session. That's my request.
Yes, I agree. Um, you know, I only whatever uh Hoffer was willing to let us know, I think it's uh, you know, but I, I do think it's important that people are aware of the major investments that we are making. Um, the effort that, on the front that we have to tackle on, right? Uh, you know, it's, it goes beyond one year. It's, it's a whole progress. So, um, you know, of, I think chief will be with us shortly, hopefully. I do have a request for him on the agenda, so we'll continue the conversation at a later time.
Mayor, I think Mr. Damon had something to say also.
Yeah, on, on my end, um, I'm going to save most of my comments for post-session only because I don't want to release some of the information. Um, I just want to make it uh, uh known that public safety is a top priority and I believe it is for, for, for all of us on the council. Um you know, going back to why things are happening, it's, you know, there's a lot of things that play into that. And I'll save all of that for post-session, but I just want the audience to know that we do take public safety as a major concern. Uh, and we are going to do what we have to do to address these issues.
Mayor, may I?
Yes, Mayor Protem. I mean, sorry, Councilmember Avila.
I just want to add, um, yes, public, uh, public safety is our priority. I have also had many conversations with the chief. And, and as you and as uh Mayor Protem have mentioned, it's something that we need to bring up in closed sessions. And just for the record, you, you never said that we were not going to discuss this in closed session. You said we were going to come back because we only had fifteen minutes. So I, I didn't see it as you denying us, speaking of the, of the situation. You said that we needed to come back after a regular scheduled meeting so we can finish or at least start a discussion to see what is going to be done or what is in the plan. That is all, Mayor. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So
Mayor, one more last one, and we'll move on if that's okay.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, a- again, as uh Mayor Protem uh just mentioned, I think obviously public safety is, is a priority for all of us. Um, it, it holds a, a deep uh special po- part um for myself, uh, coming from a, you know, from a public safety uh background and working, you know, with some of the largest departments. Uh, you know, I've been working with, you know, and speaking directly with the chief and, you know, some of his command staff over the years trying to resolve and uh, you know, butter up uh so, uh, some of the uh, you know, the gaps uh that we've had over, you know, historically. Uh, you know, that's the reason for why we've invested, uh, you know, like the one point two million dollars body cams uh and other items, you know, over the years. Um, and you know, I haven't necessarily defunded the police department. Uh, but you know, when a department is certainly running a uh, you know, overtime deficit of over one point two million dollars, uh, there's questions that need to be asked. And uh, so we did. Um, and that's why we're continuing to, you know, move forward um with, you know, the various different uh deployments, models, uh, you know, especially when it comes to, you know, when we're talking about uh, uh, these task force, uh, what that also means, and please correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Captain Hoffer. Uh, that individual that we lend out, um, because I'm well aware of what task force do, especially on the regional and state and federal levels, is that individual that we do, uh, you know, lend out, they're not necessarily working in our city. They're working in other jurisdictions and other regions, uh, working on a much larger issues, uh, more regional issues that are going on. Now, if that happens to be in our backyard, then of course that task force is being focused uh here in our city. And as the captain mentioned, you know, there are times in which we could leverage those relationships and those uh resources to be, you know, be brought back into our city. Uh, that's not something that happens, you know, on a daily basis. Uh, you know, I think some of the questions that we've all been talking about, uh, Lisa, myself, is, you know, as we've been trying to provide some of the resources for our chief is, you know, exactly as we've talked about, you know, time after time uh is, you know, our, our stats, right? It begins as simple as what's, what are our, what are, what's our crime stats? And this is not something that we want to do in pl- in closed session. We want to do this in public and that's why we've been at, working with the chief to provide him his necessary resources to provide that information for, to all of us. Um, and I know he's doing a great uh deal of uh effort to, to, to work on not only that particular item, but all the other items that we uh, you know, put forth in front of the chief uh in his command staff. Um, and you know, it's one of those areas in which, you know, over time uh will be resolved, but it's, I think it's more about, you know, this, the, uh, as uh Councilmember Garcia mentioned, you know, what she feels, uh, uh, the same with myself is I feel, you know, the graffiti's been going up and I've been sharing this with, you know, with uh, with staff uh quite over, you know, quite, for quite some time. Um, and it's just, you know, might look at, you know, us perhaps having a deploy, having someone on a Sunday, right, to help remove graffiti and so forth, right? Because that's, you know, one of those uh first indicators that are out in the community. But again, this is something that we can certainly discuss in more detail and I do appreciate this opportunity, uh, Mr. Mayor, before we move on through the agenda. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So moving on to consent calendar. Uh, is there any items looking, anybody looking to pull? I'd like to pull item number four, five and six. Eight. I think I pulled them off, huh? Great. So I'll make a motion to pass consent calendar items number one through nine, uh, not including four, five, six and eight. Can I get a second?
Okay.
Great. City clerk, roll call please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilmember Avila?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Damian?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you for that, city clerk. So we move on to item number four. And I'm glad this is one of the first items, a very exciting item. I know, uh, you know, uh, council, uh, Mayor Protem Damian and I had been talking about the potential of a uh family service center at the old Olson spot. Uh, we had potentially considered an RFP. Um, uh, staff felt that people wouldn't be interested since we had just killed an E and A. Um, and we got created and we decided that this could be a great way to expand space for the community while development, developing the downtown. I know Ben uh and some of our other staff have been working uh on the uh with some, with some groups and then we had a great idea. So we do have some uh special guests on today. So Ben, if you want to take it away.
Yes, I'd be happy to start the conversation. Um thank you, Mayor and, and City Council. Um, and then I'll pass probably the baton to uh our Parks and Recs Director next. But uh, the Family Resource Center is a public private venture. Um, uh, that it could be a public private venture, it could be a public, public venture. Um, that is very exciting. Um the uh idea is to relocate the existing Cherry Mews Family Resource Center to the parking lot uh area um, um located behind um, adjacent to Morgan Park. Where, where again, we, we were considering as a, formerly as a housing site. Um, and then redevelop the uh uh existing site where the Cherry Mews Family Resource Center is located currently into affordable housing. That's exciting because uh one of the ideas could be potentially to uh create additional senior housing at that site and um and relocate and bolster our efforts uh of the current senior housing being offered at McKinley uh, uh, senior center, senior housing next door. So um, if, if this project uh in the long run could provide some very exciting uh additional housing, uh affordable housing for seniors. Um, the staff report goes into uh a lot of detail and about the potential ideas. Uh, most of these are related again to, to Parks and Recs, so perhaps Manny is best to address those. But I will say this, um, I've worked on such projects as this um in the past in other communities. Um, I think we have an excellent team. I think we have some excellent I think we have some excellent partners. I think we have some very exciting funding sources to consider this, again, both public and private potentially. I think the site could be used for a myriad of of services to benefit the community, both from a recreational standpoint, from a family resource standpoint, and potentially, we've had initial conversations with Habitat for Humanity provide the types of services related to affordable housing and their resale store that they provide currently in other communities. And so I I think that this idea is exciting. I think there's there, I wanted to note that we we although we're discussing this tonight, we need to do a little bit more homework from a legal standpoint regarding the disposition of the city owned property and declaring it as surplus and working with it towards this effort. So that's something that we just need to a little bit more time. And and our city attorney has has began reviewing that effort and addressing that that legislation. But you'll need a little bit more time to finalize that work. But I think that the the goal tonight is to get a general direction from the City Council to move forward with this effort. And, you know, explore, we, you know, I think we we can I think we can, with very minimal expenditure, we can start to formalize the type of scope of work of the project, what could possibly fit on the site, what it generally might look like, how it generally might operate. And and come back with more discussion. Right now, we don't have any of those details, but we are excited about the opportunity for the for the proposed development.
Great, thank you. And so Manny, did you want to make any comments?
Sure, thank you, Mayor, council members. I'd I'd like to mention the current facility at the Family Service Center is approximately five thousand one hundred and fifty square feet. So we are hoping to at least double that size with a new families, family service center. So it would be approximately eleven thousand to twelve thousand square feet. So if you could visualize our current family service center, maybe something a little bit more comparable to the teen center. There seems to be a big need in the community for the city to prove to leverage our resources with nonprofit agencies. And the way we do that is that we provide facilities free of charge. We collaborate in a wide array of pro programs and services. So we are looking to receive some direction from the City Council tonight. I also have Sam Gutierrez, our Director of Public Works on the line. So Ben is focusing a little bit more on the planning and community development. Sam will focus on the construction element and design. And I will assist with the public input, engagement, and best practices in terms of the facility.
Great, thank you. And then Sam, did you have any comments?
Not many. I just want to echo what Ben and Manny have said so far, but we're ready to, depending on the direction we get from council tonight. We are ready to move into a conceptual design and study for for the development of the project. And we're also very excited and glad to help.
Great, thank you. You know, and so I think the Family Service Center was a is a is kind of an idea that's been evolving little by little. You know, it's the downtown. We don't have a lot of things, you know, as as a father of a small children, I it comes to mind that there's not a lot to do here and that we need to increase our our services and resources as well. So we've talked about creating a nonprofit hub where we can have all of our service providers have their own space. Currently, in the current Family Service Center, I think they're all sharing one or two offices. Isn't that right, Manny?
Correct, yes, sir.
Yeah, so they have to alternate between hours. They don't have it to themselves. I think it limits them and it also, you know, might cause some discomfort having to share a, you know, a desk with ten organizations. And, you know, and a multitude of people, you know, thinking beyond that, you know, we've we've had a great partnership with Habitat. They are our total partner. I recently was made aware that they are, you know, that that their leases might be up in a couple of years, putting us in a position to partner with them and hopefully have, you know, all of a big portion, if not all of Habitat operations here in the city, including the restore. And I thought that was a great idea because I recall when Bob's furniture came into the city, it was because I think you guys had done a leakage study and you saw that a lot of people were leaving the city to buy furniture. Something like this would be a multi-story effort project with multiple levels, increasing our ability to use that space for park space, recreational space, services, nonprofits. And I think it would be a very good development because it would be a development that would be for the community, a development that the community can use, can enjoy, and can and can and can get a service out of it. So I did invite the Habitat team to join us today for the council meeting. So Brian and Grant, I don't know if you have any any comments you want to make or jump on.
This is Grant speaking. Brian, are you here? Okay. Well, let me then.
I'm sorry, it took me a while to figure out how to get to the mic, but I I am here.
Okay, take it away, Brian.
Sure. You know, thank you so much for inviting us. We've truly enjoyed the partnerships of the various housing projects that we've we've been able to do with the city to help the residents in a variety of ways. When this idea was floated out to us, you know, although we are a housing provider for for affordable homeownership, the bottom line is we're a nonprofit. And our goal is to partner with other nonprofits in any way possible to make the community stronger. So, you know, this is an idea that is very intriguing to us on how we can help help the city, help the other nonprofits, and at the same time, help ourselves in the in the sense that, you know, it's kind of funny. You know, our whole, our whole core business is homeownership, yet we lease our headquarters. So it's it's my goal eventually to own our own facilities. And so we're we're excited to have conversations with you on what we can do to help you reach your goals.
Great, thank you. You know, and I thought it was a really good idea. I think, you know, Habitat has been nothing but good to the city of Bolton Park. We are our, you are our total partner. So we already work with you in the Housing Authority and, you know, we've been doing some great big things here for affordable homeownership. So Mayor Protem, I don't know if you have any comments. It looked like you were about to speak.
Yeah, I do, thank you. I just, you know, I I would love to see this project be expedited. You know, I would love to see the new Family Service Center be built already for our community. But I also would like to see or actually request if we can have staff and city attorney do more due diligence on the option of how the partnership with Habitat for Humanity is going to be structured. So that's one of the requests that I would have is just do more due diligence to see how how we're going to be able to, if we're going to be able to structure this this deal before we we move forward with anything.
Great.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Avila.
Yes, thank you. I think that's a wonderful project. Our that area definitely needs a lot of improvement and we need more square footage where we can provide more services for our community. When they do the scope of work, they're going to bring everything back for ideas for council and so we can have input on that.
Yes, yes, we, working with Sam and Ben, we would consult with an architectural firm and come up with some very preliminary architectural renderings or con conceptuals. And then we would, we would return those to City Council. And at some point, we would incorporate the community, just thinking out loud and six months down the road, maybe we could incorporate those renderings to the public at the concerts or at the Hope Fest event where we were discussing earlier. But Sam, if you want to elaborate a little bit more, or did I cover most of the elements?
Manny, let me, let me say that, you know, with the expeditious approach that we're going to be taking this up. The first thing we're going to do is what Councilmember Damian alluded to, which is let's structure this at the deal level before we get into the design, which can utterly, conceptually, things can happen at the design level without, you know, especially things that that Habitat can do on their side, you know, without us, the city, spending money upfront in that regard. But we've, we're going to focus on the structuring the deal so that so that it makes sense for both parties and bring that back to City Council quickly. That's that's certainly first order of business, I think.
And that's, I'm sorry, that's a good idea. But once you do start those those plans, I would really like to see it tie into our restaurants and blend into our, you know, like our hamburger, star burger, taco, naso, all those areas there. So they can have the opportunity maybe to provide a facility for another little restaurant adjacent to our Family Service Center where not just the employees, but the community and people that are coming in for services can sit down and enjoy the view of our beautiful park. So we can incorporate all that into the design once we get all the all that in place of I really would like to see everything connected into our downtown as discussed in the past.
Yeah, and I think and I think it's a great, to me, the way I see it is, you know, we're developing in front of City Hall, which I think is, is, you know, necessary, it's due time. But it lends itself, right? Because we've developed, we're developing a so-called, and so-called gets connected to Ramona through Papel Picado, Public Art Marquee. And then that connects itself to, you know, the potential new Family Service Center. So we have synergy going in the downtown. And and I think it's great. I think, you know, our community has really been wanting something nice in the downtown, doing something like this is is going to be, I think, a really nice development and something that, you know, it's not very, very common. And we'd be bringing in, you know, Habitat, their headquarters or operations. And I think that'd be, that's big for the city as well as we, you know, as we show everybody that we are focused on affordable housing and and fighting that housing issue.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. As we look at this conceptually, after, you know, the 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 Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted, can we also look at, you know, as we're exploring, you know, various things, you know, perhaps we can look at, you know, how this venue can be used during the evenings, right? Whether it's a, you know, a container or a version of a container looking, you know, micro, you know, coffee shop that's, you know, that's that's created, maybe even run through our students or some sort of micro enterprise and others to kind of, you know, be able to rotate folks to, you know, help them start a business, run a little business that's serving our communities and then move them on to hopefully one of the larger spaces that we have here. So if we could look at that also, and then, you know, as we talk about those opportunities, you know, there's a way of tying it in with the adult school. They have a culinary class there. So, you know, different ways of not only providing and covering the cost, but also providing the opportunities for people to uplift themselves and move forward. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a great idea, communal kitchen. I think it's kind of what you're talking about, right? A little bit more long term. I think that's
All that stuff, we'll look at all that.
Yeah, that's nice. Yeah, and, you know, we had, you know, one of the things I I brought up was, you know, it's a multi-layered building, you know, the the set of a top story, we can have an outdoor gathering place that increases our gathering space, a nice view of the city. You know, we that it'd be for use for the conscious of the park, I think it would add. And then, you know, every Habitat has their key handover ceremony, and I think that would be a great place to have it. So, yeah, so I think, you know, I don't know if any other council members have any questions, comments, concerns before we move forward.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. I just want to say that, you know, this is a wonderful project and I'm so glad that we're embarking on this. You know, this is, it's, it's been a little hub for providing social services, but this expansion is so, so needed. And it's time, you know, to modernize the facilities, but also to revisit some of the services that are being offered there and and to kind of just recreate the space. So I just wanted to express that I'm excited about it and, you know, it should be fun, should be fun creating this space.
Mr. Mayor, one last thing, too. And we can just, you know, discuss at a at a later time, perhaps setting an example of, you know, making sure that the folks that we bring on are either union or union labor and so forth, primarily, you know, bringing on folks in and around our city and then our neighboring cities. You know, we've, we did a PLA on a smart for us, you know, for the the work that the previous council, that Councilmember Garcia I know led and also with our clerk, Ms. Garcia, the other Garcia, worked on the PLA. So if there's a way of of looking at that and providing, you know, jobs for our local residents, but also the more importantly, the apprentice that work with the various trades. So if we could just explore that, I think that would provide additional value for our residents that are union members and or wish to be a full-time fledge member in whatever trade that they're looking at.
Great, I think that's a good idea. So I think we've given the clear direction. Enrique, you have it dotted down, right? And then all staff is aware. And then what was the, what was the amount that you guys had asked for?
The amount that we had requested was ninety thousand dollars, I believe, at this point. Although I don't think we are going to exhaust any funds at this point because I think we need to look at the project a little bit closer. I think Ben will probably do that with Enrique in terms of how it's going to pencil out.
Yeah, so I think it's, we should, I I think it's better since we, the conversation is, it's not promised, but we'd rather just authorize the funds now so that they are set aside. I know we're trying to keep a count on our fund two seventy-five, I think that's our ARPA fund. And then, but they're given direction and then that would be my motion. I think
Second.
I think Councilmember Hernandez seconded it, but he was on there you go, so. City Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Daniel Damian?
Yes.
Councilmember Alejandro Avila?
Yes.
Councilmember Monica?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you for that, City Clerk. And thank you to the Habitat team for being here with us today. I know it's a little bit of a long hour, but thank you, we're very excited for this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night, guys.
Thank you. So item number five, approval to accept the grant award from San Gabriel Council Governments for the program four. It's an amount of fifty thousand dollars. Manny, did you want to touch base on it?
Yes, I'd just like to share with the council that we originally applied for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant. But the cog, and that was going to be for one year, but the cog allocated fifty thousand dollars. So we are looking at providing safe parking for six months approximately. And we are proposing to utilize the Garvey site, which is adjacent to the Public Works Yard that and we we feel it would be a very good use of space on a for a interim safe parking or pilot safe parking program because it's going to probably take six to twelve months to configure the the structure to accommodate the fifty bed grant that we had applied for. So we are just, I am just circling back with the City Council just to make sure that versus a twelve month project, we're looking at a six month project, anywhere from five to ten vehicles funded through the cog. So there is no fiscal impact. Funded through the COG, so there is no fiscal impact at this time. If there is a fiscal impact, then we will, uh, return to a subsequent city council meeting and ask for additional funds. But staff feels relatively comfortable that we should be able to administer the program for six months with the allocated amount.
Great, and I think that, thank you, Manny. I think that's a good use. I mean, we don't want that property to sit vacant, uh, you know. Uh, so I think it, it makes sense internally, temporarily while we, while we construct the other stuff. However, I do think that, uh, you know, twelve months is a very long time, uh, to figure out what we're gonna do at the Garvey site. We do have the money, we have, uh, one point two, is that correct? Just for, solely for construction?
I believe it's one point one two five, and Ben has that specific number. And, uh, the number that the months that I threw out, six to twelve months are very rough. Uh, Ben are, Ben probably has a, uh, better handle on that aspect since he's heading up that project.
Yeah, so I, I would like to see us, uh, start working on the development of the, the half portion in the back, which is the empty gated area with the garage. You know, if we're gonna put tiny homes, I think Sam, you're able to plan out the, the tiny homes and, and the kind of the spacing there.
Yes, Mayor, uh, absolutely. We can start, uh, similar to what we did with the tiny homes project. A lot of lessons learned there. We can put together a site plan, start figuring out how, uh, a lot of the tiny homes can be accommodated. How many, you know, I know we gotta meet about fifty beds, but we could get started on that. Um, there was a lot of lessons learned, um, in the first part, so I think the earlier we get started, the better.
Yeah, I think that'd be great as well. I know, uh, especially because we're focusing on families here. And, uh, you know, then, well, we still have time before the new school year starts. But we want to make sure that, you know, we're doing everything we can to keep, uh, families together, uh, and safe, especially during the pandemic, right? So I do want to also work on that simultaneously. And then I'm thinking that, uh, eventually we can also, we can look at the buildings at a later date, because I think that's what's gonna slow us down. Uh, depending on how we end up using most of the space in the back, we could, uh, end up doing something, uh, different with those. I know, you know, uh, we just talked about this earlier, homelessness is a, uh, is a wide, wide variety of issues, right? It's not just, uh, the homeless, it's homeless students, homeless foster kids, uh, homeless, LGBTQIA, homeless seniors, homeless women, uh, couples and, and things like that. So, uh, we might be able to accommodate, uh, some, some extra stuff in those homes, depending on who we, uh, get to operate that. Uh, of course, as long as it, that is a fit for the families in the back. So I think, uh, we want to move on that, especially because we have the money. So there's, there's not, uh, there's no, uh, need to keep waiting on that. And then, yeah, so, and I think that is a great use, uh, so I will make a motion to pass item number five, uh, with the added-on directions. Can I get a second?
Second.
City Clerk, roll call please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mayor Estrada.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Damian.
Yes.
Councilmember Alejandro Avila.
Yes.
Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you for that, uh, City Clerk, and I believe we are all set there. And then we are at item number six, and then we have Rose Tam. So Rose, I think you are getting, for the first time ever, it appears you're getting some, uh, budgeting software.
Yes, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and City Council.
So it's, it sounds like you're not gonna use Excel anymore, right?
Yes, I'm very excited about that, and my staff are very excited about that too.
Yeah, so we're very excited. I think it's, it's, I mean, it's, it's necessary. I know you're dealing with a lot of numbers and a lot of money. Um, so I just wanted to see, I know there was that, uh, I, I, I didn't, I wasn't able to fully pay attention to all the slides that you sent me. But I wanted to make sure, is there a, uh, so will this program also make it a little bit easier to share, uh, you know, financial information with the community to make sure that they are also, you know, have easy access to, uh, the budget? I know that we have a page on the website, and I think sometimes we put up some graphs, so I just want to double check with you.
Yes, uh, that's, uh, one of the may-go. And this budget software, uh, will provide, uh, transparency and real-time information. Instead of now that we're doing manually, just for example, uh, we enter one employee's labor allocation, we have to enter about ten line items, one by one into the Excel system. Uh, once we finish thousands, thousands of entries, and we still have to import and enter the data into our accounting system. And with this system, we'll save lots and lots of steps time and save, uh, overtime money also.
Right. Yeah.
And we also have a representative from Open Gov, uh, Andrew here, in case you need to ask for the questions.
Great, okay. Um, so I see Andrew on here, I think he just muted himself. Uh, can you hear me, Andrew?
Hey, yes, I can. Good evening, Mayor Estrada.
Great, how are you doing?
Doing well, doing well.
Good, good. Well, thank you for being us with, thank you for being with us today. I do want to, uh, lend the option to our council members to ask you any questions, if they have any.
Great, yeah, and to answer your, your first one, yes. So, uh, part of this, this platform is the ability to share information and put it up on a transparency portal. So really, any information the city wishes to share and put out publicly. Um, and then also the creation of a digital budget book, which we see being really helpful in making the budget more accessible for folks who might not understand government finance super well.
Great, I think that's really important, so glad for that. Councilmember Hernandez, did you have a question or comment?
Thank you. Andrew, um, just out of curiosity, would there be a, is there an option in which, uh, you know, the, uh, the public, uh, are, is able to slice and dice, you know, what a budget look, would look like, you know, under their perspective? And then the, the second part is, would they be able to submit, um, you know, what they believe, you know, what their priorities, you know, at least under the budgeting, uh, process, uh, you know, like the city of Los Angeles and other, uh, large cities. Uh, you know, ask for, uh, public input, uh, during the, during the, during the, uh, budget process. I'm not sure if you're familiar with kind of the stuff that they use online over at the city, but also some of the portals.
Yeah, great, great questions. Um, so yeah, I'll answer them in order. So yeah, one, the first one, yes, so you will be able to slice and dice budgets, kind of go down into detail if you'd like. Um, as far as the, the public engagement and the ability to do like a, like a survey or almost like create your own budget. Um, I'm not familiar with what, uh, the city of Los Angeles is doing, but we do have a solution for that as well. Um, so you do have the option to do just what you said, and we actually see it being pretty calming during the budget process. If you want to engage and say, for example, hey, if, you know, you had a thousand dollars of public funds to spend, where would you put it across these ten different initiatives or these, you know, ten priorities or departments? Um, that, that is available within the system.
Um, perfect, and that's something that we, that we're getting with the current contract that we have now?
That's right.
Excellent. Um, Rose, I look forward, and Enrique, I look forward to using that, uh, as we go through that process. Uh, and Enrique, I, I know you're well, well aware of, you know, what I, what I'm referring to. Um, because I, I know you've gone through this, uh, a couple of times, uh, you know, maybe once or twice in, in your, in your, uh, tenure. But thank you, no further questions.
And Mayor, I just want to say that I'm glad that we're moving up to the, to the new era, because the old way of doing this budgeting was driving me crazy. So I'm glad that we found this vendor.
Yes, me too. I, I, I struggle with Excel, so I can only imagine, you know, finance doing everything on Excel. I, I salute them. I think they should be maybe encoding as well, right? So, uh, thank you, thank you, uh, Andrew for being, uh, answering our questions. And Rose, thank you for taking the lead on this and, and getting this done promptly.
Thank you, thank you for all your support. I'm very excited. And later on, with your fingerprint, uh, uh, click, and you can see, uh, up-to-date, real-time information and bu- budget information and actual versus budget and all those, uh, all those wonderful data.
Hey, thank you. So at this moment, I'm making a motion to pass item number six. Can I get a second?
Second.
City Clerk, roll call please.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mayor Estrada.
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Yes.
Councilmember Alejandro Avila.
Yes.
Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Daniel Damian.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Hey, thank you. And so I think I pulled item number eight, so we have the last, the eight. Uh, Sam, you want to take the lead on this?
Absolutely, Mayor, thank you. Yeah, so this, uh, this item is requesting, um, approval for, uh, design services. Um, uh, funding for the, uh, third floor and council chambers, uh, remodeling or improvements project. This is, um, uh, was derived, this project was derived from a, a, a list of, uh, several projects that were presented to the council back in August. And then in September, they were collectively joined into one project, uh, and added to the capital improvement, um, program. So, um, we are looking into designing, um, uh, phase for the project, which is gonna include, uh, major construction work, um, especially, uh, some structural and non-structural, uh, interior design, decor upgrades, uh, redesign of the entryway, uh, at the lobby in the third floor. Uh, new conference rooms, uh, new offices, new office, uh, sorry, new office furniture, repainting, new flooring, and improvements to restroom. Uh, I do have John Bache and, um, uh, Kevin O'Brien, um, part of the selected, uh, architectural firm. So, uh, in October, we sent out an RFP, uh, and then we set up a committee, uh, of staff, uh, as the selection committee. And, uh, they have reviewed six proposals that were sent in, there was some interviews held. And now, uh, we're making the recommendation to go with, uh, Lacanata Design Group.
Great, thank you. And I think, I think I saw Lacanata here, right? Kevin O'Brien is here.
Kevin O'Brien is here and available if you have any questions, uh, for him.
Great, I, I think it, me, uh, no questions, I think it, I think it makes sense. You know, they are the, they are the designers of, uh, of Soca Lo. Uh, they'll make, I think that, that makes it so that the design of, uh, you know, gets incorporated into that, and we have a theme going. And I think that's, that's great. The only thing I, I do want to see is, uh, you know, uh, in the chambers, I think it would be nice if one of the walls, uh, commemorates, uh, elected, elected officials, I think it'd be really nice. I know, uh, other cities have, uh, wall of mayors, and that's because they rotate so everybody becomes a mayor. Uh, here, you know, we just talked about Betty Lowe, she was the first, uh, elected woman, lea- uh, elected woman mayor. But we've also had, uh, Adalina Gregory, who was the first, uh, woman mayor ever, uh, in back in, I think, like the seventies. And at one point, she was, uh, one of three women on a council in the San Gabriel Valley. Uh, you know, we also have, uh, I believe, Ana Montenegro, who's one of the longest-serving Latina, uh, treasurers. So, you know, I've been, as you can tell, I've been reading a lot about our city history. Um, and I think that, you know, we have a re- a very, very, uh, diverse and, and rich history when it comes to, uh, our electeds. And I think, you know, the community should be aware of our history. I think the city's still fairly young, where we can capture a lot of this information and, and bring it out for people to, to see it. And I think it's, it'd be neat, you know, keep, keep a good track of our history and, and some of the things that our city has, has really, uh, led on.
Absolutely. Part of the process will be, uh, you know, addressing, um, questions like that on what we're doing in the council chamber. And we did program several council meetings as we're developing the project, uh, to, uh, have, uh, city council provide feedback.
Great, yeah, I did, I did see that. I scope, I scrolled through the thing, I just wanted to make sure I threw it out there. Yeah, great, okay. So, um, if there's any questions or comments for, uh, Lacanata from council or staff? If not, uh, well, thank you, Kevin, for being here. If you'd like to say hello, at least.
Sure, thanks very much. It's a pleasure to be here tonight.
Great, thank you. So, uh, at this moment, I will make a motion to pass item number eight. Can I get a second?
Okay.
City Clerk, roll call please.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mayor Estrada.
Yes.
Councilmember Alejandro Avila.
Yes.
Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez.
Yes.
And, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Daniel Damian.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you for that, City Clerk. Um, at this moment, I moved to a city council acting as, as a successor agency for the soft community development commission. We have a consent calendar, I will make a motion to pass that consent calendar. Can I get a second?
Mayor, I believe you pulled item number nine.
Uh, I, no, I think I said, let's see. Two, so I said four, five, six, and eight, so nine should be okay.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, no worries, thank you. Um, and then, so I did, uh, there was a motion on the floor, can I get a second?
Second.
Uh, City Clerk, roll call please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Estrada.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Daniel Damian.
Yes.
Councilmember Alejandro Avila.
Yes.
Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you. I know we have the designation of, or primary and alternate representative for the San Gabriel Valley Mosquito and Vector Control District. I think I, I had asked, uh, staff to see if anybody in our staff would be interested or able to do it. Just because I know, like, public works deals with a lot of these issues, uh, you know, it would make sense for one of our staff members, so just want to double check.
I, I would be interested, Mayor, but it, it really should go to a member of the community. No, I'm only kidding, I'm only kidding.
Boy, I think it has to be a resident, so it would be nice to have Enrique at some of these, uh, some of these meetings. If, so if not, I think the, the vector, uh, meeting isn't too far away. So I, I thought, I thought it would be a good idea for, to have somebody from staff, if staff's not able to. Um, I think I have signed up for it when we first did it, but, uh, it's a, any resident can be in it. So we had, uh, former mayor there until recently, so if it is okay with everybody, I can make it, so I'll do the vector.
I'll second your motion.
I, well, I don't, I haven't made a motion, Mayor Pro Tem, I don't want a motion to.
I'll, I'll second your.
I don't want a ma- I don't want a motion to assign myself, that's really weird.
I nominate you, Mayor Estrada.
I nominate you as well.
Thank you, there's a motion on the floor, can I get a second?
Second.
Uh, uh, sorry, the first and second. City Clerk, roll call please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, uh, Mayor Estrada.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Daniel Damian.
Yes.
Councilmember Alejandro Avila.
Yes.
Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez.
Yep.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you. Um, so, uh, now we move on to our.
Mayor, I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor, you would need an alternate as well.
Oh, we need an alternate. Okay, so we have our, our, uh, primary, should we, do we need an alternate? Is anybody on the council looking to be an alternate?
What day is this?
I don't have the.
And time?
Ooh, let's see, I don't have the, uh, it, it doesn't have it on my report, does it have it on the, on the staff report, Lulu?
Yeah, but I'm sorry, I'm getting disconnected, give me one minute.
Okay, no worries, let's see if I can, if I can find it.
Because they're on Fridays, right?
I want to say they might be. Let me double check, I don't want to give you the wrong info.
They're at seven thirty in the morning.
Oh.
What days?
I'm not sure about the day, I know the time is like at seven thirty in the morning.
Yes, I'm thirty in the morning, let's see, I'm bringing up the staff report.
Alright, no problem.
They, they're at seven AM, uh, it's on the staff report, seven AM. On the second Friday, second Friday about each month is when the meetings are.
Got it.
I'm open to being an alternative, if you can't make it, uh, that's fine. If, unless there's somebody else that really wants to wake up at seven.
I nominate Mr. Hernandez.
I'll second that. Uh, so, City Clerk, uh, roll call.
Councilmember Avila.
Yes.
Mayor, Mayor Estrada.
Yes.
Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro, Daniel Damian.
Yes.
Well, good luck.
Great, thank you for that. Okay, so, um, so we are at item number eleven. There was a consideration of ordinance of the city of Baldwin Park to establish campaign contribution limits and penalties in Baldwin Park. Um, I know, uh, Councilmember Damian, this, this was, uh, this was, uh, an effort that you spearheaded. So I do want to give you a floor, uh, before I make any comments.
Thank you, Mayor, yes. Um, I actually, uh, had, uh, several conversations with our city attorney, Robert Tafoya. Um, he worked diligently with, uh, Sean McNorris from the organization that helped him put this ordinance in place. Um, we did float out some numbers, um, you know, for me, it was something where I felt that anywhere from five hundred to seven hundred and fifty dollars was, was, you know, doable, uh, as far as the campaign contribution limit. Um, we have it on here at seven hundred and fifty dollars, open for discussion. We also covered the, um, the contributions, uh, from personal funds. Um, I believe that at one point in time, the maximum was a hundred thousand dollars that you waived, is out of your own personal funds. Um, in this particular case, uh, we did float the idea of twenty-five thousand. So we came up with the number of thirty-five thousand, which is also open for discussion. Um, my only question to the city attorney, Robert, uh, is, I see that we have the, uh, contribution by developers and vendors, does this also include independent contractors? Does this also include independent contractors contracted with the city? In example, yourself, you're contracted. Can we add that on here as well? Is Robert Tafoya on?
Yeah, he's on mute. Might have you having some, some trouble. Robert, you on? So this is, uh. Let's go ahead and open it up for discussion if anybody has any questions while Robert comes on. To answer questions.
I have a few, but I think Robert is the one who's going to answer them. One of the things I'd like to add for discussion and for clarification is in regards to the thirty five thousand. I just want to make sure that we're, that that's actually even eligible to do. Because right now, the maximum contract contributions that someone can do in the state of California for us at our local level is forty nine hundred. So that's where I did ask Robert to, to look into that, to see if that was, if that was, if that's something that we could actually do. Because that's, there's two separate things. The other thing I'd like to also raise is the, is registering PACs and independent expenditures with the city and with our clerk. So that way, again, as we're moving towards full transparency, we understand who are the folks that are, you know, trying to support, you know, certain candidates, whatever the case may be. So I think that would certainly benefit all of us, you know, in regards to PACs and independent expenditures. You know, should be filed with the city and registered with the city first and foremost with our clerk. And then held to the same, you know, ideally, we like, I'd love to put campaign caps on that, but I don't know if that's, if we're eligible or we can. The stack, the, the other thing too is, the way it currently reads is, it reads as if any elected official in the city of Baldwin Park would fall under these purviews. I believe that's not the intent. I believe it's just for the city council. And the elected positions in the city council, within the city of Baldwin Park, excuse, again, such as the clerk, treasurer, mayor and council. So I would just ask that we clarify the ordinance so it reads specific to those positions. Because again, under the current, the way it reads, it reads as if, whether you're a school board member or if you're a water board director, that this would fall under their, under that purview. And I don't believe that is the case. And separately, that's a separate, that's a, those are two different entities. So if we could just make sure we could address those items, I would appreciate that.
Robert, I don't know if you were able to get the majority of the questions that council member Hernandez had?
Yes.
You want to go ahead and answer those before I ask a few?
So yeah, I do, I do believe that the intent was to limit the ordinance to city council, clerk and mayor. And I would like to have the opportunity to clarify that language. The independent expenditures, you cannot limit the independent expenditures, at least. That was my take on it and also the take of Sean McMorris. As you know, Sean gave a presentation before the city council. When we were talking about this initially with California Common Cause, I believe it is. And I did go over a lot of the terms that are in this ordinance with him. And one of the things we specifically spoke about was the independent expenditures. So we, he does not believe that would uphold a constitutional challenge if we were to limit the independent expenditures. But we can add terms into this ordinance that would require PACs and other organizations that are going to engage in independent expenditures in either a city council, city clerk or mayor's race to identify themselves and that sort of thing and register with the city. So we could add those kinds of terms. And yes, the, the state limit right now is forty nine hundred limit contribution.
So with that limit, Robert, that just means that an individual or a candidate could only loan themselves or give themselves either which way a maximum of forty nine hundred right now. Is that correct?
Um, I, I don't, I, they, they can only, no, that, I guess that's not correct. I don't think so. I did speak with this with Sean and in terms of, if you wanted to just give yourself money. There is a Supreme Court case on that, that I spoke specifically with Sean about that. But you can't give yourself any amount of money that you want. You can't loan yourself that amount of money. But you can, like, if you just wanted to put fifty thousand dollars into your campaign of your own money that is not a loan and it's not going to be paid back out of campaign funds, you could do that.
Okay. And what's the maximum that you can loan yourself right now under, under state law?
The maximum amount that you can loan yourself, as I understand it, is forty nine hundred.
Got it. Okay. So anyone can, just for clarification, anyone could, under this current ordinance that we have is, we can, a candidate could give themselves up to thirty five thousand dollars. And that's just per election cycle, correct?
Well, no, according to the Supreme Court case, you can give yourself any amount of money. You cannot limit that amount of money.
Okay.
You can give yourself any amount of money.
Understood. And, okay, so, and then the other part, sorry, my screen's about to die, it was about to die. And the other part, just for clarification, was in regards to loaning yourself, right now, the maximum allowance is forty nine hundred. Is that correct?
That, that is my understanding, yes.
Okay. I would just ask if we can just, you know, circle, you know, just to double check to make sure that that is the case. I'm, I'm fine with that limit if that's, if that is the case. But I would just be mindful of, of that. Cause again, again, you know, when it comes to clarifications, right? Cause it all matters in rules is someone can loan themselves forty nine hundred and give themselves fifteen thousand or even, excuse me, thirty five thousand. And that would be acceptable under the, the clause that we have. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Perfect.
And there, and there, like I said, there are some things here that I, you know, we, we put this together quickly and, and I had no problem doing that, but with the understanding that if we're going to add in the stuff about the independent expenditures and the other kinds of things. I would like to have an opportunity to, you know, include that in and then bring it back to your next meeting.
I'm, I'm okay with that, Robert, because I'd rather have it done the right way. The first, you know, the second round, instead of shoving something down without having you the time to look at these things. I'm okay with seventy five hundred, seventy, seven hundred and fifty dollars or even a thousand dollars on a max. And with all the other individuals that are prohibited and so forth, as, as, you know, as listed in the ordinance. Thank you.
So the modifications that we can make, Robert, are what council member Hernandez suggested, which is registering all PACs, independent expenditures with the city. The maximum that we can loan ourselves would be forty nine hundred dollars per election cycle. And then seven hundred and fifty dollars maximum campaign contribution from any donor per election cycle. And give yourself up to thirty five thousand dollars per election cycle, correct?
No, so under the Supreme Court case, you can give yourself any amount of money. We cannot limit the amount that somebody can give themselves. So that, that has to be unlimited. It has to be unlimited.
So then we're changing, so we would be changing the thirty five thousand in the personal funds to an unlimited amount?
Yes, I think I have, I, I, we're going to be changing the loan amount that's in here. I believe I have in here that you can give yourself an unlimited amount. I believe that is in here. So we would be changing, we would be adding to add a section regarding the PACs and the independent expenditures and the registration and so forth. We'd be changing the loan amount and we would be adding language in to show that this only applies to city clerk, city council and mayor elections in Baldwin Park as opposed to any elect, any election in the city that would include, you know, water boards and all that sort of thing, that it would not include that. This is just going to be for city council, city clerk and the mayor.
Okay. And then one more thing that I had was, the question that I had for you was, we have campaign contributions by developers and vendors that are not allowed. Does this include also independent contractors that are doing business with the city? In example, yourself? Anybody that's contracted with the city and we also include that in this ordinance?
Well, I, I, I believe that would, I would be a vendor. I mean, I've got a contract with the city.
Got it. Okay. So you would be considered a vendor.
Yeah, I, you know, and so that's anybody with a contract before the city, right? And I, I'm in that, I'm in that category for sure.
Perfect, okay. I'm, I'm, I'm good with the modifications. So I have.
Right, Mayor, if you like, in order for, in order for it to be more clear, I could add that language, independent contractor as well, just so that, you know, there's no ambiguity about that.
Mayor?
Let's, let's just add it in there, just that way there's no confusions or I didn't know type of deal.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, council member Avila.
Yes, does the cannabis, does that fall under developer? What do they fall under?
Well, they would contract, they would call under vendor, council member Avila. The definition under vendor, under F is vendor means any person or entity that has an existing contract agreement or other arrangement to provide the city with good services or other items who has an interest or expectation of obtaining such a contractual arrangement. So I'm going to clarify that, of course, to make sure that that includes independent contractor. But anybody with a contract before the city, which would include our cannabis vendors as well.
Okay.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, that was one of my questions as well. I do have a couple of things as well. So I know that, so I was looking at, I've been looking at all these, I paid a little bit extra attention to Alhambra one. So I think Cathedral City has the sever, severability portion where it says, if any section, subsection, subdivision, sentence, clause, phrase or portion of this resolution or the application thereof, twenty person is for any reason held to be invalid or unconstitutional by the decision of any court of competent jurisdiction, such decisions shall not affect the validity of the remainder of the resolution. So do we have that in our, in ours?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that's section four zero one one separability. If any section, subsection, subdivision, paragraph, sentence, clause or phrase of the ordinance or any part thereof is for any reason held to be invalid or unconstitutional, so forth. Yes.
Great. And then I saw the definitions of, so our definition a little bit different says, where's that? Developer means any person or entity who is currently seeking or who has an interest in it or expectation of seeking from the city, specific plans, own change, development agreement, density bonus, subdivision, tract map. And then the term shall include any agent or representative of the developer and where the developer's business entity shall include all owner, shareholders, principals, partners, members, officers, directors and managers. I think, where is, sorry, let me find, I think, I think Alhambra had a little bit more of a, of a stricter definition of developer. So, cause I think this one is more, if there's an interest, right? And so if somebody donates, you know, we don't know there's an interest or not. And when they come in after that, should it be? So I think Alhambra just in general said no developer money.
Okay, I'll take another look at Alhambra and I will modify our developer definition as well.
Yeah, so it should be any person or entity who is currently seeking or who has an interest in or expectation of seeking. So expectation of seeking, how, how, you know, how can you define that?
My understanding of that was somebody that has submitted something but has not yet been processed through the city.
So if a developer hasn't, hasn't put anything into the city, they can contribute after elections, then turn something into the city?
So yeah, so if a developer has nothing before the city, they have no project, no application, not anything even in process, then they could donate. If they're, if they're a developer with no project, no application, no expectation of getting anything from the city.
So I think, you know, I think we don't want any loopholes in this and then somebody gets one before somebody else. I, I'll, I'll, I'm pretty said, no developer money. I would be more comfortable with that so that there's no position there.
Question on that one.
What, just for clarification, what does no developer money mean?
Uh, let's see, I can give you the definition.
Question. Why are you looking for that definition?
Yes, go ahead.
So if a developer, let's say a developer that doesn't have any business in our city, donates to our city and, or to, to a campaign, sorry. And this person wins the election, which I want to clarify, that, that includes city clerk and city treasurer, anybody running for office, correct?
Yes, yeah, yes.
So a developer contributes to one of the offices and the person wins the election. And eight months down the line, they apply to be a contractor here in our city. Is that going to ban them automatically because they've already contributed to somebody here in our city? Is it going to ban them from applying to get a contract here?
But no, I, I don't think we, I don't think we could do that. In other words, we couldn't say that you can't apply in our city. I will check for Sean McMorris and California Common Cause on that. But I, I don't, my understanding was there are some constitutional limits. And the reason why we're able to bar developers and vendors and things like that is because we're adding this clause that where they have business before the city. And that, that allows, because there are some, you know, free speech rights that people have to donate. And I asked him about that. I said, you know, I know that there's, you know, free speech rights, that's concerned, you know, donations. If we do this, do, would it withstand constitutional challenge? And he said, yes, because we're not just banning them altogether. We're not just saying nobody can ever do this ever. We're saying that they can't do this during specific times, like when you have business before the city or when you have a contract before the city or so on and so forth. So I am, I think the mayor is suggesting that we ban any developer, whether they have business before the city or not. And I'm going to have to run that by Sean in California Common Cause, just to make sure my understanding is correct. Because he was very, very helpful. He's an expert at this. He's done a, a lot of these ordinances in other cities. And so I would want to have an opportunity to run that by him before including in the ordinance. If it's just an outright ban, like no matter what, no, 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 nobody, no developer can make a donation. But, but I will do that. And if it is something that, that he thinks is constitutionally meritorious, I will do it.
Yeah, if you can look into it, because in, it raises questions and it may raise eyebrows that somebody that was not contracted here in the city does donate to, to somebody running for office, that person gets elected for office and wow, six months later, they get a contract. So I mean, it's something to look into. I don't know if that's what you were referring to, Mayor.
Yeah, so.
That's my concern when I'm thinking of that.
So measure V from Alhambra does, so they, they're a little bit more straight. So they say contributions from developers, contractors and political action committees to a candidate or committee primarily form support or opposing candidate are prohibited. So I'm more, I'm sorry, could you read that one more time there? Yeah, so contributions from developers, contractors and political action committees to a candidate or committee primarily form to support or oppose a candidate are prohibited.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'm certainly supportive of that language as noted with the PACs or independents. But Robert, I think you have some homework to do because, you know, you mentioned that that may not be, you know, that might not be able to fall within that, but I certainly support that language that the mayor just mentioned. So if you could just do your due diligence, not only with them, but if we have to speak with another outside firm that works around this. I certainly, you know, encourage you to do that, just so that way we're, you know, everything's done properly.
Yeah, I, so I've been using Sean as a very good resource and he's, he pointed me to a lot of good areas. But I might, you know, maybe if it's okay with the council, I may run this by one of our panel law firms, you know, because they've got election lawyers, BBK and some of those others. You know, they have election. You know, they have, uh, election lawyers that I could probably run this by them as well, if that's okay.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think, you know, we're not gonna pass this tonight. I think you have some more homework to do. But, I mean, we might as well bring everything out. I know, um, Alhambra also has, uh, time frames for, uh, camp for, uh. So it's a no candidate or office holder, the control committee of such a person or primarily form committee, which will make any contribution and or independent expenditures in a municipal election shall accept. Any contribution except between eighteen months prior to an election on December thirty first, so, uh, we can set a timeframe, um. For, for, uh, collecting donations, and I think that might be also a, a good idea to make sure that, you know, nobody's, uh. Uh, you know, getting a donation for a vote or anything and also helps reduce that appearance of corruption. You know, I, I would think maybe something from October and November, the year before election up until January, February, so that, uh. If anybody fell in debt, they have that opportunity to, uh. Uh, fundraise a little bit more and pay off the debt for the committee.
Okay, I do, I do think that is, um, uh, I don't think there's any issue with time windows like that. I, I, I think you're right about that. So I will, uh, I will include a time window clause. Um, in our next ordinance that's, uh, coming, uh, to you at your next council meeting.
Yeah, and then the, the loan amount, I think, uh, I know you're gonna look into it, but I, I would rather, uh, do a little bit less. Uh, ten thousand, I think, is what Alhambra did. You can look into it, uh, we can go on an amount there. I know it's still gonna come back for first reading, so we can change stuff. The loan amount, I think you said the loan amount was forty nine hundred.
I thought that's what Sean told me a- as well. I, I think, I, I think that's correct, but. I'm gonna double check on that too, because that, uh. Um, uh, the, we do have some, I did look at some ordinances where they're, uh, above, uh, forty nine hundred, so. Uh, I'm gonna make sure that we're very clear about that in our next, uh, our next draft.
Yeah, well, I think there's some.
So, if it's above, if it's above, if it's above forty nine hundred, do you want it to be above forty nine hundred, like ten thousand or whatever it is?
I'm, I'm fine with ten thousand. You wanted to forty nine hundred, that's fine with me, um, you know.
Fine with the ten thousand, Mr. Mayor, or fifteen. Honestly, i- if, if, if we're allowing anyone to give up to, we initially said thirty five thousand to give whatever. I would just say a loan up to thirty five thousand and let it be.
Okay, so I'm gonna look at that to make sure there's no limit on loans at forty nine hundred that I, that I. And if, and if, if there is no limits, then I'm gonna put it at thirty five thousand on a loan, okay?
So when you talk loan amounts, that's money that you're gonna pay yourself back from fundraising, right?
From campaign funds.
And then there, you have the personal funds, which is completely different, that you can use your own personal funds.
Personal funds are unlimited, based on the Supreme Court case. So if you wanna give yourself money, as long as you're not gonna pay it back with campaign funds, you can do that as much as you want. A- and, and again, that was a, a specific conversation that I had with Sean, because, um, I had drafted it up differently at first. And once I sent it to him and we talked about it, he pointed me out to the, uh, Supreme Court case. That says you can't limit that, so that's why I changed that.
And just for the discussion here, as we're thinking about this, um, you know, granted, elections are in November. Uh, people start to file their documents, I believe in June or July. Uh, so if we're, so that basically gives a candidate, you know, um. Maybe six, six months of time to fundraise for a campaign, under the, uh. Under what we just talked about, is that, would that be accurate, Robert? With the time frame that the mayor mentioned?
What the mayor had mentioned was October or November, the year before the election. So that would be, so that would be a year before the election, these developers and vendors are gonna be barred. And then they would be barred until like January or February after the election, so maybe another November. December, January, maybe another three months after the election.
So they're barring a year before and then a few months after.
And a few months after, yes.
All right, so we would be, so we would be barring the developers, the contractors, everybody from camp, from donating to the, in general. The timeframe would be for fundraising, so you can fundraise from wherever you want, as long as it goes under the rules during a specific time period.
So why, can I ask, Mr. Mayor, why put a ti- time limit on that? Let just anyone. When they wanna fundraise.
Well, I think it, it helps with the idea of anybody getting a, a, a campaign donation between a vote, uh, things like that, so, uh.
But, but under, but under our, under the ordinance that we have, is if they have any city business in front of us, they wouldn't be able to give us money anyways.
Yeah, so.
That just, that nullifies, that nullifies that issue, I'm sorry.
Yeah, um, so I know that, so we're still looking at how completely we're barring the contractors. Still, I think, you know, I don't know why anybody would be fundraising three years before an election. Uh, and it goes with, uh, looking at best practices. I know Alhambra did a really good job with theirs, so I'm just kind of following their lead. I thought ours was a little bit vague. So putting those things, I think it's, is, uh, pretty good.
And just, just for your reference, Mr. Mayor, the reason why sometimes, like myself, I have a campaign. Uh, committee open and I've fundraised throughout the year, because I've used it, um, to, you know, to pay and buy things in the community from time to time. So it's, it's basically almost becomes an office holder account. Um, which is completely, you know, all above board, um, for the times that I've used it for those type of purposes, so that's why I say. You know, when you just said, you know, you know, why does someone have to fundraise, then that's, those are, those are the type of things that happen during that period of time.
Yeah, so you can, you can make expenditures. I just don't see the need for fundraising in, in, you know, three years away from an election. Um, you know, there's other ways to do that, besides an F U P C, uh, committee.
No, that's it.
No, I, I think you can start a foundation. I think a lot of our elects do that. Uh, if that's what you're doing in for the well-being and it's not political, then there shouldn't be an issue. Um, so I personally.
I mean, I thought, I, I only, I don't know about starting a foundation, because that's pretty difficult. I've run a foundation, so I understand what has to happen around that. Um, but an example is, you know, when we bought, or at least I bought, uh, or paid, uh, for the soccer team, uh, rings, I used my campaign for that.
Okay, that's fine. I think you can also do it out of pocket, can't you?
I have done it.
Well, there you go, so don't worry about it.
No, I do worry about it, because I could certainly help fundraise and do greater things with other people.
Okay, and then you can fundraise for them. A lot of the booster, a lot of the, have booster clubs, they have organizations that are nonprofit, they can take the dollars, they don't have to go through your account. Um, so I don't primarily, uh, think that's a, a necessity. Of course, we have others, the council members, it's up to them to decide. Uh, obviously, whereas there's one yes for limiting the timeline, there's one for no, uh, council, uh, your opinions.
Thank you.
So we're bringing this back, modifications, correct? Well, you have, well, we're, we're still adding modifications, so we wanna know what the direction is for the timeframes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Can we ask Robert to look into the office holder account? Um, and what other cities do with regard to the office holder account, and then that could also inform us. Well, you know, based on the conversation that you and Councilmember Hernandez were just having. This way we know, because the office holders account, you know, does have a, a little bit of a different purpose than, you know. The campaign, so I'd be curious to know, what does Alhambra do, or what are some of these cities that we've referenced? What do they do with regard to office holders account? So, Robert, can you look into that for us as part of your?
What, what, uh, what do other cities, including Alhambra, do regarding office holder accounts? I can look at that.
Yeah, you know, the cities that have been referenced in this report.
Yes.
Yeah, let's, let's find out what they do. That'll, that'll at least inform us, if nothing else.
Okay.
Right, and then, of course, the, 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 the penalty, I think. What it is, it's, uh, five hundred dollars, so you can, you can break this, you can. So if I take, uh, you know, five thousand dollars from somebody, all I have to do is pay the city five hundred dollars in a fine.
Oh, no, um, that's why they, uh, and I did talk to Sean about that as well. That's why, um, you have to do at least one day in jail. And he thought, you know, look, people, people will pay fines, but they don't wanna spend a day in jail, and so, you know, that's why he added that. That's why I added that.
Okay, so I know, I know Alhambra is a little bit stricter. I don't know if he worked on the Alhambra. I know Alhambra would go as far as allowing, uh, somebody to be taken to court and then not allowing those count, those loads to count. Obviously, I don't think we wanna go that far. But, you know, I, um, wanted to double check, so I know like the F U P C charges a, a percentage formula where if you, I think. Fail to do something, they'll charge you, uh, a percentage of that or some sort of multiplication table formula, so.
I did see some ordinances, mayors, I was looking at it, where they would do three times the donation violation, so. You know, if you accept a donation for five thousand, then your fine is fifteen thousand. So that would certainly be a deterrent, you know, you wouldn't accept five thousand to pay a, a fine of fifteen thousand.
Yeah, because if it's, if it seems that, you know, all you have to do is pay five hundred dollars, I don't think it would deter. You know, it would be kind of deterring the, the little man and everybody else could go on with that, so maybe find some other options as well, and then we can make a decision on those then.
Okay, so i- i- look at increasing the fines.
I like three times idea.
Maybe to a multiple of the violation, like three times, okay, gotcha.
I think three times, I mean, that is a deterrent.
Okay.
Yeah.
Other things, Robert, is in regards to the, uh, you know, protest period, um, I know we wanna, you know, ship this off. To the F P P C to do this, uh, work for us, um, and they have a whole process of adjudication. Right? Uh, right now, the ordinance, if I remember correctly, has our CEO or somebody else doing that adjudication. Um, is that correct?
Well, the way I have it written right now is the F P P C is gonna do everything, so where the city's gonna con- but you do have to contract with them. Where they're going to accept complaints, they're gonna prosecute complaints and they're gonna do the whole thing. As it's written now says, if for some reason a contract is not in place with the F P P C. For any reason, just we don't have a contract with them at that time or what happens, then it falls upon our city clerk and our CEO. Because I know that, um, the council had expressed the desire to keep, you know, the city attorney's office out of that sort of thing, and so that's why I put it like that, but. The idea is that it's going to be the F P P C, and they're gonna do everything, receive complaints, prosecute them, fines, everything.
And the edu- uh, adjudication, right? If there's a protest.
And the adjudication, if there's a, uh, a protest. And you get an opportunity to, you know, uh, file something to say, no, this really wasn't a violation, they would also adjudicate that as well.
Perfect, sounds great. They do it all the time, so I'm, I support that.
Great. Um, so I think those are all the ones, and then of course, uh. I think, I don't know if you have to clarify that it's also, you know, any candidate or, uh, committee controlled by them. I think there's also limitations on those. Um, so if somebody has, you know, a multitude of, of committees. Uh, but that's something to double check with here, I, I can't explain it too well. I would say, however, that I think that this is a, a really important thing to do. A lot of the cities around us are doing it. Um, you know, uh, I think it was important to bring it up now, so that, uh, later on, there's no, uh, again misconceptions of, of what's going on. Everybody's aware. At the beginning of the year, uh, we can continue working on it, uh, and pass it, but I, I would like to see this also on the ballot in November. So that it gets reinforced by the community, um, you know, we can pass something now and, you know, in a couple of years, uh, council member will come in here and change it. I think that when the community speaks on it, it's a little bit more enforceable and it stays, it stays as it should.
Okay, so, uh, any candidate or a committee controlled by candidate, and the idea is like straw committees or something like that, you wanna make sure that that's included.
Yeah, so I think that there's some lingo, um.
That's already, just, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, that's already illegal, uh, already. Already, so just be aware that that's, that's already, uh, a big no-no, um, regarding straw committees and so forth. And truth be told, you could, the way the, the work, the way it works is you also have to have a, a current, uh, campaign. Uh, for the, you know, for the current election year or whatever that is that you have, could only be used for those funds, so if there's a second committee. Uh, from a previous year or something else, that second committee cannot be used if it's being controlled, uh, by the, the candidate. Because the candidate could only control one committee, uh, for election cycles. That's, that's already the law.
Yeah, okay, great. Um, I think there's, there's lingo in the Alhambra one, I couldn't find it, but there is a definition of, you know, what one person is, so one person sits on one, uh. Well, we're banning a lot of, uh, organizations, but, you know, if they sit on one organization, they also part of another board or something like that. Uh, something to look into. I'll, I'll send you the lingo, Robert, and then we can bring it up the next council meeting.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
Great, so I think, uh, so, uh, we'll make a motion, uh, to add the recommended, uh. Uh, changes, and of course, you're gonna go do your homework, uh. And figure out what is feasible and what is not, and then we'll bring it back for you, though.
Thank you.
Great, so, uh, at this moment, uh, I guess I'll make a motion, uh, with added direction, uh, we will hold off on this reading till the next, uh, city council meeting. Which is February second.
Yes.
Second. Can I get a, did I say, can I, sorry, can I get a second? I said February second, huh? Can I get a second?
Did it, Mr. Damian seconded?
I didn't hear. I thought, uh, Councilmember Hernandez seconded. Oh.
I heard a second and it was a male voice.
I heard, I heard a sec, I heard a second, but I'll second.
Okay, I'll second then.
Um, okay, city clerk, roll call please.
Okay, who seconded? Just to be sure.
I think Danny said it first, okay.
Good, because that's who I wrote down, okay.
Yes.
Mayor pro tem, Daniel Damian?
Yes.
Councilmember Alejandro Avila?
Yes.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Did you guys just change the vote? Because I think that Councilmember Hernandez did second, and I think Councilmember, uh, or Mayor Pro Tem Damian acknowledged that.
No, I'm, uh, thank you, Councilmember Garcia, but no, I did not actually say anything, uh, in regards to the second.
Oh, got it, okay.
I don't know who that was, maybe it was, I think it was, uh, excuse me, Vice Mayor Damian.
Okay, all right, just wanna make sure.
I, I think it's when the mayor said February second.
And then I caught myself and I said, can I get a February second, and I was like, what am I?
Yes, yes, I think that's what, that, that.
You can only do that for February, Mayor.
Yeah, that's a good one, I'll do that at the next meeting. So, okay, so we're all done with our agenda, very good, we got some good stuff done. Um, I did have a couple of requests, as you could see, I took up a portion of the page, so, um, I just wanted to make sure that we're start working on more of our, uh, efforts to, uh. Uh, invest in infrastructure. I know, uh, the air duct facility, the air duct in our facilities, uh, was on the list to clean up. And, you know, as we're, we're trying to keep, uh, air quality good and clean, we wanna make sure we work on that. We already talked about the parking sites, uh, and the citywide toilet replacement, um, I know that we also talked about, uh, city facilities. City facilities, a lot of our facilities are, are a lot older. Um, ma- many of our toilets, I think, are, are, are pretty, uh, a pretty good amount of years old. I think I would say they're at least ten years old. Would, would you think that, Sam?
Sorry, Mayor, I was, uh, I was on mute and, you know, uh, yeah, absolutely, there, uh, some of them are maybe even older.
Great. Oh, yes, yeah, okay, thank you. Yeah, I wasn't sure. I know that they, they, they look a little old. Um, so do our fountains. I know, I've seen some of them are still at two point two gallons, uh, per minute, which is a lot, considering that we could be at one point or point seventy five gallons per minute. Um, so I wanna make, and of course, we are in a drought, uh, so we wanna spearhead those efforts as well, conserve water, uh, here in the San Ysid Valley. Um, so I do wanna give staff that direction to start working on the toilets for, uh, city facilities. And then, I know we've been talking with PD and, and doing everything that we can. Chief, I brought this up to you, uh, a couple of days ago. I, I wanna see if we can partner with, uh, with Ring on a, on a distribution program. I think that you guys might have already started looking into that, uh, on your own.
Yes, sir.
Possibility, we'd love to do that. I think the neighbors would appreciate it. Um, and then, if possible, even expand it to our, uh, business owners, because I know that those are some of the, the hotter spots that, that we can help, uh, that can help us get some. Uh, important surveillance footage out there. Um, and then, uh, I have been speaking to some of the community churches, uh, churches do have, uh, nonprofit arms where they offer a lot of, uh, services. I spoke to, uh, Saint John's after La Posada, and I, and I heard that they had a, a lot of, uh, mental health, uh. Resources available for the community at wide, without having to be a parishioner there, um, and that's something that we're able to. Uh, partner with on churches, with the program that they have, uh, I think it would be a lot easier for us to offer those services and resources, rather than having to reinvent the wheel and. Starting to create new programs here, and, you know, they're already set up and running elsewhere in the community. Um, and then, Chief, uh, I did want to, uh, ask you for a, uh. Status, uh, report on the status of internal affairs in the, in the police department. You know, whichever way you feel most comfortable sending that to us, either through a memo or a staff report, I think it is important for us to know, uh. Uh, you know, what we're working on, what needs work, what you need from the council to help you out. Uh, and also, you know, what our, what our police department is looking at, where are we lacking? Uh, you know, how many more officers do we need to hire, uh, task force and, and anything else, uh, that is crucial in how it affects us. I know that earlier we talked about, uh. Uh, forfeit asset, uh, forfeit, uh, as- asset forfeitures, can you speak today? Um, and how they would help fund the department and, uh, upgrade critical infrastructure, so we wanna know about that as well. I know that that's not really happening right now. Uh, so overall, just a general, a general inquiry into PD.
Yes, on the internal affairs, that, that is something that we'd have to do in closed session. It's on the internal affairs. That, that is something that we'd have to do in closed session if it's to, to discuss. It, uh, incidents or discuss personnel issues, that would be in closed session, but it, but a, a, a general idea as to internal affairs. Um, process, like we could discuss that, uh, you know, how complaints are, are, um. How, how their, the, the intake is done and then what the investigative process occurs to the community. Since I looked at, I'm not sure. So maybe we, if you need some clarification, I, I would need some clarification from you to understand what you're really looking for.
Chief and Mayor, um, the, I had an opportunity to speak with chief briefly about this. And i- i- internal affairs, that's a sort of a, a, a term of art within the police department. Internal affairs account for, you know, internal affairs investigations, internal affairs, uh, procedures. Those things are, uh, personnel issues that, and I don't think that's what the mayor, I don't hear that's what you want, Mayor. I, I, it sounds like you're asking for more general things like, you know, staffing and what you're doing with asset forfeiture and. You know, things that are internal to the department chief, but not necessarily internal affairs. Because internal affairs is that term of art that deals with very private personnel issues that, um, uh. Cannot really be discussed, uh, hardly at all. So is that my understanding, Mayor? Am I correct? Or internal, general internal issues within the department, like what you just identified? But not necessarily internal affairs investigations and things of that nature?
Yes, so I agree. So none, none of that, uh, internal, internal stuff, more of the infrastructure, your needs, what the council could do, you know, where we're lacking funding. Uh, you know, how the task force works, how that, uh, impacted your ability to fund the department. Um, you know, the, the, uh, sort of, uh, how many positions have been open, how many have been able to hire, uh, what are the difficulties with that? Um, and everything, uh, like that. And also, uh, you can even add, I think, what you've been working on, because I know you've been here, uh, for a year. And I think, you know, you've been doing a lot. Um, and I, and I do think that, you know, we want to recognize you in public and also be transparent with the public so that they know that, you know. Uh, PD is stable, we're working on things. Um, and, but I think it's also important for the public to understand, uh, the complexity of the police department, right? You can't just go out and hire an officer. It takes, you know, a year, I think, just the background, right?
Yes, sir.
So there's, there's a lot of things and I think this way, uh, we create that transparency with, uh, with the community that they are looking for. Informs them of what the processes are to get to a better level.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Great, thank you. So, uh, that was all my re, my requests. Yes, ma, uh, council member Avila.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for all your requests. Those are all great requests. I do have a, a follow-up question for, for Ben. We have discussed this before, the, the Target parking lot. Um, the sign that off of the Francis Gito entrance. It still has not been cleaned and I know you're in communication with them. Um, it's not cleaned and also if we can have more enforcement in our parking lots, um. One that comes to mind immediately is the CBS right there on Francis Gito and Baldwin Park Boulevard. Um, there's a lot of trash everywhere. And also I know it's probably, if you can, um, talk to the property owner. The section of the parking lot gets flooded that when you have, when you go into that parking lot, there's only one little section you can go through. Because it's flooded right at the corner of Baldwin Park Boulevard and Francis Gito. And not only that, it's very dirty. So we can, uh, inspect all of our businesses, the parking lots to make sure they're, they're keeping them clean. The areas where they hold their trash. I like the way, um, Oyo Loco has their, their area for the, the big trash bin. They have it covered with, uh, plants and bushes. So you don't even know that the trash can is there. So if we can do something so that all the businesses are, are doing that. Um, it would make our, our, our businesses look nicer. So we can work on that, Ben. And I, like I said, I know you're working on the, the target problem, sorry. But, um, if you can follow up to see where they're at with that and, and get those parking lots cleaned up, please. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you. Yeah, the idea was to try to get Target to allow our, uh, graffiti crew to. Uh, take care of the problem immediately. So, uh, we're working on that and I'll be talking to Sam about that. And maybe some of the other shopping centers would also like to do that as well, so that we immediately address the graffiti at a port B. Um, and then, uh, we can take care of it more quickly because of the, the sign, the tagging on those target signs is just constant. So, yes, following up on that and, uh, it's funny you mentioned the flooding at CBS, because I've experienced that myself. That, I don't, I don't know what happened there, but, uh, I'll, I'll follow up with, uh, you know, planning and engineering and see if anything can be done. I've experienced that myself in previous years. It's, it's a strange, uh, problem.
And, and I know all of our departments have been impacted, uh, Ben, Sam, especially you, both of your departments, uh. With COVID and you being short staffed. So I, I understand this past two weeks have been difficult for everybody. And so, um, I hope everybody gets better really soon so that we can get our departments up and going. And, and keep the, the city looking nice because you guys do an amazing job. Don't think that I, I'm picking on you. By all means, I am not. I, I, I understand and, and, and take a, um. Did notify us that we have had some cases and I understand you're short. So, so I hope they all get better really soon.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I did, oh, yes, go ahead, council member.
Yeah, I just had a couple of things, um. First off, Sam, um, Sam, did we already obtain the new street sweeper?
No, so the street sweeper was approved by the city council. We have the founding and we, uh, the funding and we placed the order for the new sweeper. So it, there's a three-month lead time, so we'll have it, uh, in about two to three months.
Okay, only because we're getting, I'm getting complaints about the streets being dirtier after the street sweeper passes by. I guess it's. I guess it's past its time.
Yeah, we have one street sweeper that it's, um, you know, well beyond its useful life and that's the one that is being replaced. Uh, again, the order has, uh, been placed and, uh, we're just, it's just waiting for it to arrive.
Perfect. And then chief, um, parking enforcement, I've got a complaint. I know that they, I think, I believe, Mayor, that you were copied on the email that they sent me. A resident who lives off of Stewart and I believe it's, uh, the Rockinback area. Um, he goes out for daily walks down towards Stewart, Los Angeles Street. Um, Baldwin Park Boulevard, kind of that, that area there. And there's a lot of vehicles that are blocking the sidewalk. So example, they don't fit in the driveway, they just kind of park halfways in the driveway and the other halfway is coming out towards the sidewalk. So it doesn't allow for any type of pedestrians to walk through there. They have to kind of walk out to the street. Which, um, you know, for anybody who's ADA complaint, uh, you know, on a wheelchair or anything like that, they're not going to be able to get through there. So if we can start enforcing that and then, um, Sam, also the complaint was from there. And, and I know this myself, I experienced it a lot because I live off of, uh. Off of Stewart, close to Live Oak. And, you know, what, when they, when the people are coming home from work, they use that Stewart area a lot. And so I've experienced it a lot, not only with traffic, but, you know, when they have the ability to speed, they speed by there a lot. So I don't know what we can do to kind of monitor, you know, how, how many vehicles, if, you know, there's a lot of speeding going on there. Uh, because there is a lot of children that are in that area. Um, and that's one of the complaints that I did get. So maybe we can look into that. Um, and I do have the residence information, just in case you want to touch base with them. I'll forward that to you, uh, in an email. And the last couple of things, Mayor, were, um, I know I, I didn't add these to the agenda, but I wanted to see. Uh, have a future discussion about term limits and if we need to add those on the ballot as well. Um, and then apart from that, one of the requests that you had, uh, with the different churches and the services that they provide. I would like to see how we as a city can create a manual, a handbook, uh, you know, a bible of services. Somewhere, something where we can kind of team up with all of the organizations, nonprofit and church organizations in the city. And see what it is that they provide, what days and times, so that we have a resource book of where we can send certain people. Uh, you know, certain days, you know, for example, St. John's may have something, you know, twice a week, uh, Church of the Redeemer may have something else. Kind of work with all of them and kind of put it all together in a book to where we have that resource guide, whether it's digital or not. And that way, if someone needs assistance for whatever it is, we know where to point them to. Uh, because I've come, I've come across a lot of, um, situations where we've had to look for different services for different community members. And it's been a hassle trying to make phone calls and be directed to different areas. Um, and you know, although Manny and our Parks and Recreation Department do an excellent job, you know, we can only do so much. And I think that if we kind of combine our efforts, we can get a lot more done. So if we can start looking into that, if you need me to start the conversation and reaching out to different organizations and church groups. Um, I would be more than happy Manny or whoever is going to, you know, handle this, um, to start making those conversations and setting up the appointments. So we can get that going.
Mayor.
Yes.
I, I have a, a little concern. Um, I, I understand sweeper day is a concern for everybody. And I have seen the driveways blocked, but there's a lot of families that have multiple families living in a home. Um, and that's why they get their, their drive. I've, I've had complaints that, that they get ticketed for blocking the driveway. When in reality, there's nowhere else for them to park their car during sweeper day. Maybe make it that they park, uh. Until the sweeper goes by and then they're able to put it back on the street because there's a time limit. From, for example, from seven to eleven or seven to twelve, you can park on the street. But let's say the sweeper goes by right at eight o'clock and you can move your car back on the street and, and possibly not cite these people. We need to figure out something that's going to work for everybody because, again, if we have multiple families living in a, in a household that. Possibly don't work on Wednesday's or they work nights or whatever the reason that they have all these vehicles and nowhere to park, we need to find a solution. What do we do instead of just citing them? Because I've heard the opposite, like I said, that they're getting cited. Because they're blocking the driveway, but yet they have nowhere else to park their car. So, um, if we can find a, a better solution, then start citing. And, um, that way we can accommodate both, that they're not blocking the driveway the whole time. And, uh, they're not getting ticketed.
And just like.
We can brainstorm.
And just an idea, council member Avila, um, I don't know, you know, we do it in our neighborhood. Uh, sometimes there's no parking out in the street, I mean, during street sweeping time. And so what we'll do is, you know, the neighbors will share each other's driveway. Um, you know, there's times where I have people parking in my driveway, um, just so that they don't get ticketed. But that way, you know, the street sweeper passes by, then they can move the car afterwards. But that may be an idea. I mean, obviously not every neighbor is going to want to do that, but that is an option, you know, just, I mean, parking is just an issue period in our city. But, you know, sometimes we have to start getting creative and think outside the box. And if you do have a good relationship with your neighbor, maybe it would be a good idea to kind of see, you know, who, who is not home, who has space. And park your car in the driveway.
Or just not ticket the people that are in the street if the sweeper went by, because you can tell when the sweeper has gone by already. The, I, I mean, it's very obvious. You could see the, the, the sweeper marks on the street. So let's say somebody has, uh, decides to park on the street already after it passed and code enforcement passes by. You know, why ticket them when they've already been by? And, and that's the whole idea, to make sure that we're accommodating both. Because let's say there's somebody that doesn't even talk to their neighbors and, and there's people like that, they're very private. They're not going to want to go ask the neighbor. I actually go around the corner to park at a neighbor's house. Because we don't have enough room. So I'm able to do that, but not everybody will be able to do that. So we can find a solution. I'm sure we could do it. And then with the ADUs coming in, the situation is going to get worse. So if we can just brainstorm and figure out what we can do for those that need to park temporarily in the driveway. You know, before the sweeper comes and then move the cars back out and just not get a ticket since we can tell when they've gone by. Thank you.
Okay, um, so I did, I did put, I did jot down two more things and I think they are very important. Um, I think it would be important for the city to do an RFP for a, uh, for somebody to lobby on our behalf at state capital. This would help us tremendously, uh, bringing in more money, more funds, more, uh, opportunities for the city, uh, in many ways. Um, I think we're, uh, it's pretty common for cities to have one. We, we don't have one. I don't think we've ever had. Uh, but a lot of our neighboring cities do, and I think it, it, uh, it pays for itself. Uh, you know, we have a great grant writer. I know our staff is tremendously well at, at grant writing as well, but having a lobbyist at the state capital, I think it, uh, also benefits us tremendously. And then I know that we've talked about, uh, expanding our, uh, network or, or fiber capabilities. And it would be, Sam, I would like to direct Sam to look into it. I think, uh. I think the main operator here in the city, I think they are classified as a, uh. I forgot what they're classified as, but that allows us to work with them without having to go through an RFP. We can see what it could cost, uh, to expand our internet, uh, capabilities. And that would actually benefit our communities greatly, expanding their access to quality internet services, as we know, a lot of kids are at, at home. Um, and they rely on it, uh, and, uh, this way they're not just relying on one cable company. They can now expand. I know a lot of cell phone companies are now offering five G internet. Uh, so doing something like this will allow them to, uh, instead of paying, you know, cable, which is kind of a. Point through the roof right now. They can, uh, try to find a service with, uh, just as good of a capability at a lower price. Great. So, uh, thank you for that. I know that was a long list. Staff, thank you. I, I don't think I mentioned it earlier, but Sam and Public Works, thank you. Cause I know you were also out there at Kaiser with our PD and you were putting up signs, helping out. And then Manny, I know you took the lead and, and helped, uh. Bring in a testing and vaccination site, Morgan, to help, uh, in, in hopes that we could ease the traffic out there and get people to come over here. So, thank you staff for coming back and, and, you know, working diligently. We appreciate it. Uh, so at this point, uh, council will, uh, council and, and some of our directors will move into a closed session. Uh, so, meeting won't be adjourned, but, hi, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Hi, Mayor, you have, uh, finance and housing?
Oh, you're correct. Sorry. So meetings are adjourned. So we have the Baldwin Park Finance Authority Virtual Regular Meeting and we have a consent calendar. And then we also have a consent calendar for a housing authority. So I will make a motion to pass both consent calendars simultaneously. Can I get a second?
Second.
Uh, city clerk, roll call please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Estrada?
Yes.
Mayor pro temp Daniel Damian?
Yes.
Council member Alejandro Avila?
Yes.
Council member Monica Garcia?
Yes.
Council member Paul Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you for that. And thank you for that, uh, chief's deputy city clerk. Uh, as I said earlier, I will see, uh, council in closed session.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Buenos dias.
Buenos dias.